All right, good evening, welcome to City Council Part July. And I think we're all glad here because there's air conditioning. Because a lot of old New England homes, no air, so we'd rather be here, right? All right, thank you all. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-9. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. I don't see Anthony, okay. So we are calling this meeting to order at 6:31 PM by my clock. So we're going to start with a roll call of members, and I don't think we have any members remote today. Fantastic.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Williams?
Here.
Counselor Perry?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Vice President Garrett?
Here.
Counselor Minhaas is not here. Counselor Toranzo notified us that he would not be in attendance. And President Wondolowski?
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to make sure everybody knows if you're here for public comment, there's a sign up sheet right here, so your name. And when we do public comment, and I'll remind everybody again, we'll be limited to the amount of time you have, and you have to state your name and your address for the record. It's just one of those open meeting law things that we do. So our first order, our next order of business is approving the May 8th, May 21st, and June 18th City Council meeting minutes. Can I have somebody make a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? My name is spelled wrong in the beginning of the May minutes. It's easy to do. Extra O's, missing an S or a W. It happens.
At least Michael is spelled the Michael way.
Okay, so with no other comments, we can just take a yea nay. So all in favor of approving all of the minutes?
Aye.
Any abstains, opposed? All right, that motion passes. And next we're moving on to communications from the Superintendent of Schools. So my understanding is our new superintendent is here to meet us, so we're delighted that he's able to be here.
This is Roland Joyle. We are very lucky that he's here with us. He comes with years of experience being the Superintendent of Chickaby, and most recently interim Superintendent in Munson. And he's already doing a great job, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to introduce myself, Roland Joyle, and as the mayor mentioned, retiree. And you probably wonder, how can a guy so young be retired, right?
Seventy-two.
But it happens at times. I was fortunate to put in my time early in life, I guess you'd say in that sense. But, you know, retired, but don't want to sit at home, right? Too young, think I have some things to offer. So I've been fortunate since I've been retired to do some fill-ins in Northampton. I was in Greenfield last year, actually, last January to June doing that. And then this past January-June was the Superintendent in Munson filling in. So they have some retirees that times do work. Obviously, you had a last-minute job to fill for the next year, so hopefully I can work, delighted to work with the mayor and the school committee to help them through this year and lay the groundwork for next year. We've got a busy year going on, and the summer's been going well. It's only been two weeks, so I'm barely learning everybody's names, so I apologize. I haven't looked at the flashcards for all of you yet to know all your names in that sense. But we're doing a lot of hiring. You may see if you know of anybody looking for jobs, it's on schoolspring.com. So we're hiring for some teachers, individual aides, custodians, even a principal. Unfortunately, we had a principal just give us notice the other day at Discovery Four Corners. We'll be looking for doing that job. A lot going on facility-wise in our buildings as well, too. And I know you know a lot of it because you've appropriated a lot of the funds, and given that, so we appreciate that. Some of the, just a couple of the big ones are, the Greenfield Middle School's floor is being done over, so it's a pretty big process. They've stripped it right now. It's going to have a nice logo, the Green Wave logo, on there coming up, and that should anticipate being done by the end of the month. At Federal Street School, you know you've given some money for the elevator. That's ongoing work, nonstop, and should be completed by the end of the summer. We're hoping literally right around that start of school in that sense. And the regular cleanup, right, of the custodians and all the workers, the summer help, cleaning classrooms, stripping the floors, waxing the floors that need to be waxed, a lot of that stuff, and some painting, things like that. We have a robust extended school year going on, ESY they call it. The old days, we would've said summer school in that sense, but we have a lot of that going on at Discovery and AEL, in the high, well, in the high school, I'm sorry, AEL and the high school. And fortunate to have great opportunities and cooperation from our city departments. Tomorrow, they do different things each week. It's a Monday to Thursday program. And tomorrow, we have cooperation with the Fire Department, the Police Department, and AMR bringing ambulances. It's a big truck day or truck day that they do and to meet their law enforcement and public safety officials. So they're going to start at AEL early at nine and then go over to the high school for about ten-ish. So some nice cooperation between city departments, which is really nice to have. And the last thing is, oh, I wanted to mention, summer eats. You probably see the signs everywhere. You have a robust food service department here in the sense of not just for the nice things that they do during the school year, from farm-to-table initiatives and that type of stuff, but what you do in the summer is more than I have ever seen done in most municipalities in terms of what they do. I spent an hour over there last week. They ran me through their, all the tables, how they're putting everything together, and saw them give out lunches at the high school in that sense. And I'm looking forward to getting out to some of the evening things where they give out the dinner as well, too. So I think that's a big plus. I, like I said, I have not seen that, and I've been quite a few places, but that's great. So you should be proud of yourself for what you're doing in Greenfield with that. And, you know, in the future, obviously, any questions that you have, I won't have too many answers tonight with a couple of weeks in, in that sense. But just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that I'm available.
Any questions I see, I don't know if you were first, Counselor Healy or Counselor Perry?
I just want to say welcome. You were actually my principal in Chickaby in 2004 at Chickaby High School.
Ah! All right.
And actually, when we were talking about SROs, not to bring up a sensitive topic, but Officer Fisher came up because he was the SRO at Chickaby High at the time. So glad to have you in Greenfield, welcome.
Well, thanks for introducing yourself.
I wanted to know if you wore the New England Patriots t-shirt as a statement.
Well, you know, I did speak with the mayor today about my dress, right? I wasn't, you know, exactly ready to come before you in that sense. And I'm thinking, oh, I hope the house isn't divided with the Patriots here, you know, today, so I would've been neutral otherwise.
I guess my question, and I'm the Counselor Wondolowski, welcome. And what excites you about working in Greenfield?
I think what excites me is the fact that I was here last year, so I had a little tie. I don't want to pretend to that I know everybody, but I saw a lot of the great things that were going on. I got to spend time in the middle school and the high school last year. And these are smaller, it's been a smaller district than I've generally grown up and worked in, in that scenario. And I found that with a smaller district, you can do a lot more things. And you can make those connections. And I thought we made great connections at the middle school and the high school last year. And you have a lot of good things going for you, whether it's the arts programs, the sports, the academics. Teachers who care appear in that way. And it was a way to give back. And some of the jobs that I've done since, while I was working and since I've been retired, when I've come back, is I've worked with, and I kind of joke, younger people, or people who are looking to do different things in life, maybe teachers advancing to be a vice principal, vice principal wanting to be a principal, principal wanting to maybe go into central office. And while I haven't seen everything in life, I have seen a lot. And I, my job, my hope is that I can pass that on if people want to take that knowledge, right? And any experiences that I can have and help them move along the way.
Great, thank you. Well, welcome. We're excited to work with you and forge new connections. And I think, Mayor, you get to stay in the hot seat.
Thank you. Nice meeting you, everybody.
So just a little, few little news items. The downtown police station just opened. Both the Police Department and Central Maintenance have been working hard to move this along, and we're very excited to have that increased presence in our downtown. I hope you might drive by or go in and check it out. We've opened the cooling centers several days during the summer to deal with the hot weather, including today, and are thankful for the support of the library and the senior center to make sure our neighbors can stay safe in these dangerously hot temperatures. Ensuring that residents have good ways to cool off while recreating and socializing is no longer just about fun, it's important for our community's mental and physical well-being. We're grateful to Central Maintenance and the Recreation Department for continuing to repair and update the splash pad. However, there are concerns that we might need a larger renovation or replacement shortly on the, because there's a, about a 10-year projected lifespan for a splash pad, so we're already having some issues with that already. Additionally, there are some long-term concerns about the future viability at the Green River Swimming Area due to flooding, climate change, and repair costs of the dam, but we're just, that's just in the looking stages to see how we can work with that. Along those lines, planning is underway for the Warming Center, and I've been in touch with our delegation as well as the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to help us secure funding if and when it becomes available for next year. So we're hoping if we get in touch with them early, we'll be the people that they pick to give the money to. I know most of you have already heard of the changes at the DPW. Marlowe has moved on to become the Director of the DPW in Hatfield. I cannot tell you how much his service to Greenfield was just fabulous. It can't be overstated, and he will be sorely missed. But I do want to introduce to you today, so I hope that you'll be ready to clap again. We have Paul Newell here in the back. Paul, if you would stand up. Okay. Yes. Paul Newell is the new director, and he has over three decades of experience with the Greenfield DPW across multiple divisions. Paul is here tonight after a long day at the DPW. And also Glenn Robinson has moved from the City Engineer position to the Assistant Director at the DPW. I'm confident that under the leadership of these two, the DPW will continue to provide the most critical services our city depends on. We also have another new person here, our new Communications Director, Jonathan Weber. Jonathan, would you like to wave and say hi to everybody? Lots of, lots of new faces tonight. They're all wonderful people. He is a Pioneer Valley native and recently returned to the area after working in the nonprofit and municipal worlds in Vermont. Jonathan will be communicating all kinds of things, including Friday nights on the Common, which was prompted by the comments from Vice President Garrett last month about having more events on Court Square. I just happen to have some flyers for the things that are happening in August, and you'll probably be hearing more about that later, but I printed out some of those, and you'll be hearing from our Communications Director more because they'll be on the website. Almost lastly, a few weeks ago, the American Legion Post 81 approached us with a proposal to replace the baseball scoreboard at Veterans Field. This is an exciting opportunity to make sure our young athletes have working equipment and highlights the continuing partnership between the Greenfield Athletics and the Veterans Group since the field was first dedicated. I'm thankful for their proposal and excited to work with them on this project. Thank you to the American Legion. The Heroes Act proposed changes are before you tonight on the agenda. They were reviewed yesterday by Ways and Means. The proposal will offer much-needed tax relief to veterans and their families, and I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of those changes. The land conservation item that was on the agenda for me to speak with, I'm not speaking about that today because it didn't, it needs a little bit more work before it comes before you. I think it will be coming before you in August. It's in process and will be coming to a meeting near you very soon, hopefully, hopefully And lastly, I'm just going to answer the question that I received, a question on Juneteenth. The city had no involvement in the Juneteenth award ceremony. I was at the award ceremony to support Maria Burge, who I heard was getting an award, but had no knowledge as to the other award recipients before the ceremony. The organizer of the Juneteenth celebration was the sole decider who would receive the awards, and I was, I would say, probably as surprised as all of you. And so I hope that answers your question on that. And I'll take any other questions that you might have.
Counselors, Counselor Master Tataro.
This isn't a question, it's a statement. John and I took a walk downtown Monday, and the parking garage looks awesome. I'm assuming the, it was not only the Fire Department, but the DPW had, both had their hands in that and...
Central Maintenance, yes.
And Central Maintenance. But it's awesome.
Thank you.
And thanks for getting that done.
We're working very hard to keep it clean. You probably see, we purchased some new cigarette butt containers. They're out in front of, of City Hall, and there's some over in the parking garage, and we're encouraging, you know, the friends that we meet who are sitting out front to encourage their friends to actually put the cigarette butts in the containers. So we're working on it. It's, it's going to be done again, I think, three times this year, and then twice a year after that. It had not been done before, but we're going to keep that nice and clean so that everybody wants to park at the parking garage. Also, something was done to the floor in the elevator so that that can be, you know, washed and cleaned up if anybody misbehaves in the elevator, which unfortunately has happened in the past. But Central Maintenance was, they were fabulous, and they dedicated over a week to cleaning that up, so thank you for noticing that.
Counselor Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor, for all the updates and all the hard work that's being done, especially in this heat. I know that it's very tough for everyone who's working outside of our air-conditioned buildings and keeping the air conditioners running, so big appreciation to everyone involved in that. Couple of questions related to things that you just reported about. I'm curious if the splash pad repair or replacement was budgeted for, or if that's something that we don't have the funding allocated for.
So I brought it up, and thank you for asking the question. I brought it up because I'm trying to alert you to things that we're thinking of ahead of time. That was not, you know, it wasn't in a capital plan, it was a, I'm not very mechanical, as you all know, but it was like a push-button thing, I think like under the ground, though. And, so if you stepped on it, so it was like a button, if you stepped on it, and, and they replaced that every, in the Central Maintenance budget for, there's like probably a couple of thousand for each building or facility. So that was taken out of that, but I've spent time talking to our plumber, Steve Chevalier, and Christie, and Joe Pugs, and I learned that they only last about 10 years. And that is used so much that I just thought, okay, there's always a whole bunch of children down there. And, and so it will be something that we'll be looking to, you know, highlights to, we're getting together to talk about what things will be, need to put in for capital plan. So it wasn't a huge expense, but it will be.
Thank you. My second question, I'll start with a statement. I'm very sad to hear about Director Warner's departure. Very much welcome, Director Newell. But I, you know, it is concerning, I feel, to lose another experienced city department head who is incredibly skilled, you know, very dedicated to Greenfield. I know he was just recognized by the State Senate for his service to Greenfield, so we congratulate him on that. And so I'm curious if you can speak to this, if there was any effort made to keep him in Greenfield, and also what steps are being taken to retain other staff and make sure that we keep our dedicated city staff. Thanks.
Right. So, you know, when he first came into the office, he'd already had interviews, I guess, through the, you know, Hatfield, and I don't want to speak to his thing more than that, but I think it was, it was a lot less staff to be managing, et cetera, et cetera. At different stages in your life, people might want different things. But in general, I would say we make, you know, every effort. Matthew, our Communication Director, that left, we, you know, you, you make things as best as you can for the circumstance. If somebody wants to do a day that they're working from home or some accommodation that you could make. There's two jobs for every people in Massachusetts, which is a frightening thing. So, you know, people talk all the time about, or I heard them here even when I was on council about the, you know, we need good jobs, and I thought, well, we have a lot of good jobs. We don't have enough people to be in them. In the DPW world, poaching is like an art form, and I've spoken to people, you know, they've come to different things, and I'm like, enough, you know, don't come here anymore and be, to be, you know, poaching from one place to another. There are things that, they are so difficult to get, these water licenses, which is something that I knew absolutely nothing about before I got to be the mayor. Maybe some of you knew about these things, I didn't. It takes you like five years to get a water license, and I was just actually having something with HR about how we can poach people back or little, they send little cards from one city to another if you're in water, what do you call it, water, yeah, they send cards to them. They don't know all the people, they get little postcards. And I thought, well, if they're getting little postcards, we should be sending little postcards too. Additionally, for some of those things, like the tough jobs to get people in, a, I want to meet with Rick Martin, and I haven't done that yet, although Erin has been over and met with him, about seeing if we can do a little bit of a better job with a pipeline to get people with some certifications, like CDLs, if that was something that we could work with the tech school on. And, and I imagine they don't have anything like that on water, but to talk about this because it would be great if there was a program with water licenses either at our high school or at our tech school so that we're getting the folks right from, you know, Greenfield High School or the tech school to go into these things. There aren't people in health inspections, you can't get them, you have to steal them from other communities. And that's what, really, truthfully, what people have been doing, maybe not stealing, poaching would be a better word, I bespoke, it was my bad. You know, if you were poaching from other people, that is what people are doing because there are not enough municipal workers in many of the things, most especially, I think most especially DPW and inspections and finance and, well, and assessing. Everybody's, they're poaching.
Yeah, I have a question related to the downtown substation and the parking garage. I got a lot of comments in the last, like, week or two about it. People were really excited to see the substation finished. I'm wondering if the seating and the bee sculpture is going to go back into that area?
So I don't know about that. It's possible, if there was one thing I wanted to put back first, it would be the chess table.
Yeah.
I don't think benches right by the street worked for the community, and people have had other suggestions about having them in the park part. What worked with that was it was in the shade. So I haven't, I don't know, but if there was one thing that would go before the others, it would not be benches on the sidewalk because if that didn't work before, it's still a place where, where we're going to put one of our cigarette butt holders, we're going to lay a little cement patch and put that there because there's a lot of folks that are there. And the summertime probably is the bigger time for people, but I, I am definitely not opposed to that. I loved the pocket park. We just had more things, it, more things with that last summer than I wished that we I guess that's my answer for now, but I don't know.
Okay.
But willing to listen.
Okay, yeah, I've had a number of requests just since the substation's been finished from residents asking, especially because it is summertime and there isn't a ton of seating downtown.
Right.
My other question, though, is I've done a lot of talking this week and last week about parking, and especially in the last few days because I've been collecting my signatures, and so talked to a lot of folks on my street and in my neighborhood. And I'm wondering if the, the parking garage is going to be a part of the, like, downtown beat that regularly gets patrolled by the downtown officer?
Yes, I actually, as soon as that was, we were finishing cleaning that up, or the week that we were cleaning it up, I spoke with our Police Chief Todd Dodge, who's also here tonight, and I asked him about, you know, more regular patrols going through there, and indeed, yes, they are doing that. Additionally, if we can keep it as nice as we are, and anybody that goes in, feel free, bend over and pick up anything that you see that's on the ground. We put trash barrels in there now, and then just go wash your hands afterwards. But having it look better, there should be more better, there should be more people that are there, and the, the people help to patrol it as well. But yes, that is already in the plans and happening now as we speak.
Can I ask one question, then we'll come back to you?
Yes.
Mayor, since it's come up around housing and parking and all of that, and there have been suggestions about the Green River School being turned into housing, and I know that that is tricky, and I just wanted your perspective on if, because I know what I've heard is we might have to repay back if it doesn't stay within educational purposes, and I wanted to just check that understanding.
So, yes, so the, we're just actually working on the RFP for that right now. And the MSBA is a funny little group. I never met them before, I've only talked to them on the phone, and they give money for all kinds of things in schools. They gave money for the, you know, the high school, they gave money for the Green River School, I think Four Corners, and what else? So many schools, many school systems, they've received money for this, and then if you're not using the school anymore, what happens to that? So we've been in constant touch with the MSBA because we have a plan where we're talking about reusing it for, for educational purposes for little children. I've had three entities come forward that were interested in it. I think I've probably said that before, you know, Pioneer Valley Symphony, the Strings for Kids, an art space, and the YMCA. There could be many others, I'm announcing that, this RFP should be out shortly. It's a million dollars that we received from the MSBA, and my hope, and they won't exactly say that, is that if, if we are reusing it and it's for educational purposes, that we would not have to repay that loan, which is why I'm not thinking about converting it to housing. And we've been working with our delegation on that as well. It's kind of a little scary to make, you know, for the city actually to take that building back, but I'm hopeful that, I'm sure that... for the city actually to take that building back. But I'm hopeful that, I'm sure that they're an organization that's made up of some very intelligent people. And there's a lot of communities that don't have as many schools as they used to. But the safest bet or is, this is what our delegation thinks as well, is reusing it for educational purposes. And hopefully, the next group that's coming in will put in that heating system so it doesn't cost us anything. So that's the plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Gordon?
Thanks. I know that you have a thousand competing priorities, and this is rightfully probably lower on the list. But I'm curious if there's a timeline, if it hasn't happened yet, I haven't been there in a few days, for the steps to be repaired at City Hall.
Oh, that's a great question. I just, yes, this was a, that was a tough one. There is a timeline. The plan is for next week. We, it's just a long story of, we had other people thought they could do something. And we're actually, what we're going to be doing is the same thing that we've been doing, which is patching that. And I'm not sure at all that that is going to like work long term because of things that I would not try to explain to you. Because I don't really quite understand them. But the water gets in there and it freezes. And it seems to be like around, right around the pole that's in the cement. And it keeps happening. But we couldn't actually, other than chunking out the whole stairs. So next week, that's the, I guess, the bottom line.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So as we've been doing throughout this year, we've been inviting city departments to come up and give us an update. So we have Kristy Moore from Everything Outside and Recreation to talk to us in the summer in July. So it seemed to be appropriate. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for the invitation. I did prepare a little bit, but I wanted to respond about the splash pad. I think I have a little bit more information. So the splash pad has been, I think we built it in 2010. I think is the year that we built that. And it has ongoing, like anything like playground routine maintenance. But that, what the mayor was describing was the activator, which is a foot activator. We've replaced it twice. They, this last time, they said they had changed the wiring and everything. So we got the part in and it's not going to work. So I'm in the process with communicating with them about getting a, it's called a bollard activator, which is on the opposite side by the green where all the valves are. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that unit. But that size doesn't fit the same hole. So everything is complicated. So we're working on it. But we have to return the other activator and price out the bollard and probably get, yeah, Paul, your help in the back with welding a different flange for it. So eventually, we will need to replace it. That was a grant that we wrote. It's called Our Common Backyard Grant. And that was like $350,000 back in 2010, just to give you an idea. So.
Sounds like so much fun. Thank you.
But with the splash pad, we are putting in, and I know I'm kind of jumping out of order, our shade shelter, which they're working on the building permits now for that. So the end of July, August, that should be up. It takes like 20 weeks to arrive. It's crazy how long that stuff takes. So with that, I'll just jump in. So it's been a very busy summer already. We have all kinds of events and parks programs and things that you guys know that we do. And along with that, we manage over 30 summer seasonal staff who have worked through this heat and humidity to keep the public and campers safe down at the river. So it has been tremendously hot this year. But very happy that the, knock on wood, the river testing has all been within range. And we haven't had to, I'm not even going to say it, for the season yet. We have two and a half weeks before the try. So I want to make sure we can swim this year with the try. The swim area is open seven days a week. And we've had record numbers this, about two weeks ago with the July 4th weekend. We had overflow, two overflow lots that were completely filled. And we had a line on Nash's Mill Road to get into the park until people left. That's how busy we were. But we are at the half point of summer camp. So that makes us happy, although then school is just around the corner with after school. But each week, we see over 90 campers per week at the swim area. And we work very closely, as you heard about the school lunch service program, where we have breakfast and lunch. And there are a couple of parks that they bring their vehicle, like the skate park, I think it's Tuesday or Wednesday nights, that they provide free dinner at the skate park as well. The fireworks was a huge success. Thank you to everybody who came to support that. And those watching at home, if you haven't sent in your donation, will gladly still accept it because we're still trying to cover all our expenses from the event. This Friday, if you need something to do, is our movie in the park at 9:00 PM, because it takes a while to get dark now. And you won't want to miss Dog Man. Never seen it. But bring your kids and your blanket and popcorn, and you can join me for a Dog Man movie. The 42nd Annual Triathlon is two and a half weeks away. It's on Sunday, August 3rd. And that is one of our largest fundraisers. We have between 300 and 350 athletes and over 100 different volunteers that we manage for that event. We always need volunteers. So if anybody wants to get up early, we're usually there at 4:00 AM. Yes, that's AM, to start setting up. You don't have to come quite that early. But we definitely need lots of volunteers. So anybody watching at home or anybody here in the audience, you can sign up on our website, greenfieldrecreation.com, and then click on the try. As far as community preservation projects, I'm really happy to share, there's been a lot of progress with those. As I said, the Hillside Shelter is expected to be installed here the end of this month or beginning of next. The Rube Goldberg play panels, which are levers and pulleys, those have been ordered and should be here for a fall installation. And then what I'm most excited about, and I do have a couple of pictures to show you, is that the Highland Park Trail Maintenance Project, which has taken over two years to get the permitting for this project, would not have happened without our conservation agent, Jessica Siegel. She was instrumental in helping me get approval from the state. So I can't emphasize how important it is that we have a conservation agent. This week, we have had 10 Appalachian Mountain Club workers from across the country, as far as Wisconsin, Indiana, Illinois, all working in our park system. They are doing trail maintenance, water, water bog bridges, as well as installing water bars. And they just have such an immense skill set and training in trail maintenance and rock work progression, which is just amazing because we just don't have that knowledge in-house. And I wish I could hire them year round to do maintenance for us. But I have some photos I'll pass around. They're just doing a fabulous job. And they'll be finished on Thursday, tomorrow. So if you see, see them out there with their orange hats, please thank them. And then lastly, I just want to say that I have such an amazing team that there's just four of us. I don't know if you guys all remember that. We work long days, nights, holidays, weekends, and we provide services to our citizens. And like tonight, when I'm here with you, they're at the swimming area because it's our summer camp family night, running three-legged races, water balloons, and toss, and all that fun, traditional camp stuff, and a barbecue for our parents and family members of our campers. So that's pretty much all I have. I don't know if there's any specific questions, but I just wanted to give you a few highlights of what we've been doing in this heat.
I have Councilor Gulliver, then Master Titora, and Councilor.
I just actually want to thank you. I was going to ask you about the hiking trails, but I want to thank you for your work on that. And thank you for the, your work this summer. And also thank you for your patience with, for me, with your ordinance changes. I promise you that I've not forgotten them. My just to-do list in life is long, but the to-do list of ordinances that we're working on is long. So if there's anything that feels urgent, please let me know. But I am working on it. I haven't forgotten about you. So thank you for all the things.
Of course. We still have, I still have some homework to get back to you on.
Okay, good. It's on that list. Okay, good. Thanks.
I want to say thank you as well. The Recreation Department has come a long way since I sat on that commission. I won't even say how many years ago. So, but I think it was the year you were hired was my last year.
You hired me, Mike, yeah. 20 years I've been here almost.
My question is, you said the triathlon, triathlon's your biggest income. Yeah. Could you share with us what you generally bring in with that?
It varies. It's several thousand. We try, we have like a cyclical year of like when we need to order swim caps or when we need to order like bike equipment and that kind of stuff. So it's not always consistent. But anywhere between $3,000 and $5,000 is usually what we bring in. On a good year, we've had $8,000. And that, that's how we pay for pretty much everything to operate for the year with employees and anything I need for like basketballs, pencils, paper. Like you guys all know, like my operating budget is pretty much just humans. I don't have a lot of expenses built in. Yep. And we bring people from all over. We have people that come from California, Arizona, Hawaii. We've had people come from England that participate in our triathlon. So that's pretty special, too.
Do you have a general idea as to where those people from out of town generally stay, just local hotels? Well, there's two.
I know. We need to work on that.
Airbnbs or, do you, do you help people find places to stay?
We do. Like the Hampton Inn helps us. They used to do a room block, but not enough people use it. So I think a lot of people probably do the Airbnb nowadays. But we recommend them to the, to the local Hampton Inn.
Thanks.
Councilor Williams?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for your work as well. I'm very happy about the work that's going on in Highland Park as somebody who walks there every morning. But one thing I'd like to note that, I've noticed this year that the park is riddled with poison ivy. It seems to be everywhere.
On a certain trail?
Yeah, on the trail, on the walking trail, on both sides of the walking trail and in the parking lot, on the sides of the parking lot. So I was going to volunteer to help with that. But if there's somebody who, does your department take care of something like that?
We don't. Well, I'm sure you guys know that we can't spray in town. So if anybody has goats, we'll gladly set up something with goats. But I'll, I'll talk to Paul and our conservation agent and see what we can do about that.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you for your work. It keeps Greenfield happy and fun and alive. And I wanted to ask about the fireworks, like how the funding works for that, if that's from the operating budget or how much the fundraising covers. And then also, I know, I like the alternatives, how much those cost and what thoughts have been explored on that topic.
Sure. So the fireworks are funded solely by donations and sponsors. So we have local businesses who sponsor. And then we just collect from people sending in donations when I beg and plead. Like we used to collect on the Common in the Court Square, but it's just not safe. And we never really got enough money to be out there for hours on end. So it's all solely by our citizens and those that watch them around. If you guys know of people that have parties that, you know, come together to celebrate, like bring a can, ask them for donations. Because they're obviously enjoying the fireworks, but we don't always get, if everybody just gave a buck, like there's 17,000 of us that live here, like it would be paid for. We fundraise between 18,000 and 20,000. That's our goal. But that encover, that covers all the expenses for the fireworks, which includes like the sandy cans. If there's any overtime, police detail, that kind of stuff. Also, the food vendors, we do charge a fee and that all goes to cover the fireworks as well.
And then just like on the alternatives piece, like a drone show or silent fireworks, like I don't know any details about how that kind of thing works.
Sure. Many years ago, we looked at the drone shows as they were just coming out, and they were super expensive, much like in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. I have not checked at them recently. But.
Councilor Perry?
I'm just thinking while I was listening to you talk, during budget season, we talk to big ticket items. And some of the smaller departments are just kind of, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then when you sit here and listen to you and all the stuff that you do all through the year, if there's one unsung hero in this city, it's you and your department. So. It's something that people take for granted because it just happens. You drive by the pool and you see the kids out there. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, fireworks, oh, great time. But people don't stop to think about who does all that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Bullock?
I love when everyone's nice. I have a question. The mayor mentioned something about the dam and like concerns about, which is really stressful for me because I use the town beach like pretty much daily in the summertime. And I think it's so important that we have that splash pad because there's lots of kids who can't get to town beach because it's a little far out there for some of us. But so I'm wondering if there's like an update you can give us on, like, what do we need? Is there something we should be looking at to next year's budget to keep it open, that sort of thing?
Well, it's no secret, like we can always use more funding. So if you ever want to see a full operating budget, I'll be glad to give it to you on what we need for everything. But I think, obviously with Paul Newell now stepping in as our DPW director, like I need to work closely with him because we really need to fill out permits to dredge the river again. It's been a long time since we've done that. If you see it on a Friday morning, like Mother Nature, like she's in charge. Like no matter what we do, she's in charge. Like there are huge berms of sand and rock that have just changed the flow of the river. So we need to, we need to do a lot of maintenance down there. We are waiting for clearance. Again, it's been about two years. Just next to the playground where there's an old CCC rock wall, it's been two years. We're trying to get permission to put some rock there to stabilize that embankment because we used to be able to drive tractors through there for mowing. You can't even walk through there now because it keeps eroding. So that's just an example. Again, like our trail project and how long it takes to get permitting through, it's through the state. It's not through our local conservation commission. It's all through the state. So I think we need to start those permitting projects for those kind of repairs. And then ultimately, I think I did kind of scare the mayor because in our capital plan, like I do have like a bridge replacement and that kind of stuff in there. But that bridge replacement is also so that we could drive a vehicle across there because right now it's just a walking bridge. And then making the, all the dam boards, I don't know if you guys realize, there's only two boards that we can control with an electric drill. So picture a 16-year-old who's not as muscular as all of us trying to hold that drill to raise the dams, those two, every week. Or Monday, we did it twice because of the storms. And so all the other ones are wooden. So we don't have access to control those, which would help with protection of flooding down there. And then like, I mean, we all love that area, but it does need constant maintenance. And then obviously, our dream is to have an outdoor pool someplace, which could be open like dome-wise in the summer and then closed would be accessible in the winter. But we need to find a location. We need to figure out how to fund that. And then I agree, like the splash pad is used by so many people who just don't have any other water access. So we will need to look at a replacement plan on that. And I already talked to one of my representatives. She's going to come in August and we're going to try to use the same footprint. Obviously, the concrete all is going to have to be replaced. But I would like to keep it in that same, same footprint.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I've noticed it's really shallow this year. So it's like, it's like filled in in that middle area. But as we get into the next budget season, one of the things I think about a lot is, especially when we have these years where we have huge storms that impact that area, like what is the cost trade-off for if we actually did build a municipal pool? And so maybe I'll just make a time to talk with you. Because I also wonder, like, what's the revenue that we generate for that versus just having it accessible to people is another thing I think about a lot for that area. But I would love a pool. Initially, when we had some of the Hope Street meetings about what to do with 53 Hope Street, I was like, let's put the pool there.
Right, right.
So, you know, parking, pool, housing, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, the mayor and I talked even about Green River School.
Yeah.
Everything needs to be centrally located.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for all that you do in your department, your small, my-
Thank you so much and thank you for all that you do in your department, your small, mighty group does for Greenfield.
Of course, thank you.
All right, so, um, now we're gonna open up public comments. It is seven twenty-two, um, a reminder that everybody has three minutes. Many of us have not eaten dinner, so, uh, if it's shorter, that's awesome, but we want you to say everything that you need to say. Again, and when you come up, uh, your name and your address for the record. And, um, there's a timer buzzer that Clerk Scott uses, so if you hear that, um, start rapid, really end your sentence. It's not the time to get that extra paragraph in that you didn't get in. So thank you, everybody, for being, for both being here and sharing as, as well as following our procedures. So first person I've got is Tim Kane. Oh, sorry. I thought it looked like, I, I, I'm glad it wasn't Carl and I said it was Tim, 'cause that would have been really bad. Thank you. And then if you push the button for the green light to go on.
All right, hello, everybody, how you doing? All right, I'm Timothy Carl, I live twenty-five Prospect Avenue in Greenfield. Um, I've been here since ninety-seven. Found that house after, I think it was eighty-seven houses, we looked at. Love Greenfield, um, I've seen a lot of changes in Greenfield, didn't accept some of them, didn't agree with a lot of them. There's one that's coming up now talking about the, uh, parking lot on Hope Street. There was a while back where there was a big issue for parking in Greenfield. So we came up with the idea of doing a parking lot. That's gonna add a lot of parking for Greenfield. So I don't understand what has changed because when we did the parking lot for Greenfield, that big parking garage on Olive Street, that went up the same time we were still using that parking lot on Hope Street. So what I was told at one, one of the other meetings that there is plenty of parking for the area of people that live there, which is not correct. Most places have two or three cars, vehicles, whatever, to park there. There's not enough room in that area for parking. Someone has bought the armory, I think that they're going to put apartments in, I'm not sure. Wasn't sure about what's going there with the armory. A personal use, I'm not sure. So they're gonna need parking. That armory has no room there for parking. So the parking for them, they're gonna have to use the garage. Again, there's, the garage was built 'cause we needed parking when we were using that parking lot. So the, and then the whole parking lot thing went away 'cause we needed a fire station because we tore one down and we didn't have a fire station, we had to put a tent up for the fire station. That was a big thing I disagreed with. I was working, I had a lot going on. Tonight, I have something I really need to get done, but I need to get this done too. There's several times trying to come out of Prospect Avenue, people are parked right up the end of the road. We've called several times, can't keep bothering the police department for that. You come out of Prospect Avenue, they're coming up, flying up Prospect Street. Somebody just told me that they came really close to getting T-boned again, again. I leave my house at five o'clock in the morning and it happens. So the parking in the area, I don't understand if we don't use that parking garage, I don't understand why we can't use it now, um, how it's gonna help to take that parking garage and add more living is what I was doing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Susan Morgaftik.
Here we go. Susan Morgaftik, forty-five Forest Avenue. I am here both representing myself and representing Housing Greenfield. We have been very excited about the possibility of housing going into the fifty-three Hope Street lot. There are, the, we are, according to the housing study that was done, we are anywhere, depending on which number you use, even with all of the new housing coming in, we still, for this decade, are down six hundred units. That's a lot of units, four hundred to six hundred units, depending on whether you think there's four hundred or eight hundred units to come in. We've got about two hundred units coming in so far, but we're not close to where we need to be. So having central housing near the library, near the Y, near, uh, right where people can walk to work or walk to school is gonna be a major addition to the community. I'd also like to just mention that I understand the parking concerns and those parking concerns are also about where people park on Prospect, uh, Street. And I think that things have to be really looked at as to how we figure out how to make it so they don't park right onto the corner of Prospect Avenue and Park, Prospect Street and how we make sure that people can see where they're going. But that's a different question. We have not been able to park cars in the Hope Street lot now for almo, for more than three years. And during that time, we figured out the other things to do. And I think it would be a mistake to remake it into a parking lot. I'd like to point out that the plans for, the request for proposals that is going to go out to developers for this, should you approve it, will include asking potential developers what their parking plan is. One of the architects that we've talked to has talked about putting parking underneath the buildings on, on, uh, Hope Street. So that's a possibility. There's no projected income restriction for this housing. So it's likely that development will be mixed income and therefore will be a, an addition to the neighborhood that already exists there. So it'll include people who are, um, are paying rent, just like, you know, everyone pays rent who is not and some people who are getting subsidized housing. Also, we're looking at the possibility of there being mixed-use housing, so possibly commercial on the first floor, for instance, and housing above. So there are options that are available and we're waiting, we, you know, should, should we be able to put this out to people? There would be a great opportunity to be able to look at different options that developers would provide to us and would give us that. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Mullen?
Hi, I'm Michael Mullen, uh, three sixteen Chapman Street. Also here to talk a little bit about the proposal to, um, how do we say this? We're gonna deem the Hope Street lot a surplus at fifty-three, um, specifically just speaking to a matter of dollars and cents. I understand that there's a lot of considerations about the parking or what that lot could be turned into, but based on just the, um, tax cards, that property is assessed at about two hundred thousand dollars just as a parking lot. So I don't think the city collects its taxes on its own property. If we did, I don't think that'll help our budget. So just in selling that property and then the tax revenue saying it's two percent on that value, even if it's not improved in any way, I mean, that's a lot of money that could be maybe used for recreational purposes or other things where it's not used right now. Doing some comparisons to, uh, the Salvation Army lot, which is right across the street. We could maybe expect with some development, that's gonna at least double in value. So there's maybe twenty-three thousand a year that we'll be looking at if we take that cost and also the tax revenue that would be in for like a decade, so that's, those are all real numbers. So really, I'm just kind of thinking that it's important to just consider what's the opportunity cost of that place sitting there? Not doing anything, um, saying that what it has been is what it should be is really just the same as a choice of one way or the other. So let's try to kind of consider any piece of parcel in the entire municipality as kind of like our responsible resource to figure out, you know, how to get it put in towards good ends and important ends and being efficient and, um, effective about what that is, is, is a choice that we do have to make and that we're all kind of responsible for here, um, councilors in particular, but I think anyone who lives in Greenfield should be thinking about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I have Wisty Rohrbacher.
Wisty Rohrbacher, twenty-eight Prospect Avenue. I love that location. Really what I kind of think is maybe pie in the sky. I would like to free up that location to begin to work with developers. I hope then the developers are chosen who will consider making that spot a hub for the whole neighborhood. So when I think about that place, I hope that there'll be housing, I hope that there will be some shops. I hope the parking will be underground, but I hope that it will be a place that attracts and welcomes the whole neighborhood and the whole city and helps open Hope Street to have more traffic, more lighting, um, to just become a more lively part of the whole city. So, um, I hope that a lot of thought goes into real creativity about what's put in there. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we've got Dawn Moran.
She signed up after me, so she's part of me and herself. So we got six minutes. Hi, um, I'm actually gonna talk fast 'cause I'm here for two things. One thing I'm super excited about and one that I'm not super excited about.
Did we get your name and address, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, uh, my name's Dawn Moran and I'm on Hope Street. Um, so I'm gonna fart, I'm gonna start with, um, the events that we have planned for the Town Common in August off of your question to the mayor. So we have, uh, August first, some family karaoke and dance party. August eighth, we have some games galore, which includes both yard games and tabletop games and activities for everybody. August fifteenth, we're doing a free family bingo, um, with just candy bar prizes. We're doing a bike and stroller wagon parade with a theme of Jurassic Park, um, or prehistoric days. And then we're doing a vendor night to coordinate with the, um, arts walk on Fridays. This is a collaboration between a group of citizens and the city. Kristi, as much as she's doing, she took my emails and my phone calls and, and they're gonna be lending us some games. The library's getting involved to include stuff. And I'm so excited because today I actually walked Main Street for, in this heat, yes, for a few hours and hit the restaurants and the businesses and they are excited. So, um, yeah, and I wanna give a shout-out to Maria, our community liaison, because she has made this really come to life, um, with her connections and, and, um, just being able to get the public safety involved for like the bike parade and she'll tell you more about that on her time, 'cause I have more I wanna say. So anyways, yeah, I'm looking forward to, to doing that and I hope to see every single one of you there for every one of these events, even karaoke. You're good with a microphone, right? Okay, so anyways, now to the serious business. I've been on Hope Street for thirty-eight years running my business and living there. Someone sent me the links to watch the economic development meeting, that was on July eighth. My blood boiled when I saw the three women speak on behalf of all of our neighbors who are excited about this housing. So I'm just, I, I sent you all an email and I did have some arguments in there, so hopefully you actually read the email. So I'm not gonna go over everything that I said in there, but I am going to add that after watching that meeting. Again, I took off in this heat for four hours and hit a hundred and twenty homes in my neighborhood with flyers against the projects being put in that parking lot. And I didn't talk to everybody, but I talked to some people and other than, I obviously showed up their address. I didn't realize they lived there. They were for it, but everybody else that I was actually able to talk to was against it. And so that's why I'm here tonight also on behalf of them as well. Yeah, so don't, I see that there's familiar faces from that meeting I'm talking about and they're here to speak again today, but please, don't let them convince you that all the neighbors are excited and on board for that housing project in there. Thanks.
Thank you. Maria?
Hello, um, most of you know, know me, I'm Maria Burge, I live in Garfield Street. And I'm also the community liaison for the Greenfield Police Department. Part of my job is to support initiatives for the community, to, um, look for ways to res, to, um, share resources and make things happen where there is no money. We have zero budget for these projects. The mayor said, I want this to happen and in one, one night, one evening, we put this whole, all events for August together. And now we're making the phone calls and see who's gonna be able to help, donate or whatever. So I'm really excited because she has been doing, Dawn has been walking around downtown, which is something that I do also, to try to get collaborations with the businesses and stuff. So I do hope that at least some of you can come and sing for us on the first time and bring your kids. And we are planning on, you know, possibly getting the fire department there to get everybody wet if it's, if it's a hot day. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next I've got Eva Carl.
Hi, my name is Eva Carl, I'm twenty-five Prospect Avenue. Eva Carl, twenty-five Prospect Avenue. I feel that I would like it to go, stay a parking lot. I don't know why it hasn't been free to us to use its time. A lot of us that live in the area have to have parking permits to park on the streets in our own houses because of all this chaos that's gone off with the library, um, extra buildings being done. I feel like pulling out of our, our, our roads with all the parking that's not available anymore, I feel like we're selling off Greenfield, we just sold Armory, and Armory did the same thing, right, for surplus for the same reason, but my taxes didn't go down, didn't anybody else's. I feel worth paying more and more and more, so I guess we're spending more than we're making? So is this just another, let's just sell another part of Greenfield and see what happens? I just feel that this is not the answer, it's not gonna make a difference. I feel there's enough chaos at the end of the road there that we're dealing with every day. And to put more vehicles in that vicinity, no one's listening to us. We've asked for sidewalks in the area, we've asked for the cars to be marked, uh, signs to go down, people not to park next stop signs, over and over, and no one's listening to us in that area. And it's been ongoing. So I feel this is gonna make more, like the fire station there, how, how, it was just too much chaos, it's too much. And the parking is not there. When they did the parking survey, they did not even come down our area. They found that one of the meetings. And also, um, when they redid the parking survey, they made it so instead of having two or three cars per apartment or dwelling, they lowered it to one to make it like it looked there was parking, but there's not enough parking. You go to the apartments and see how many cars are there, they're parked on the road. They're parked on everybody's road in front of everybody's house and it's dangerous. And nobody's done nothing about it. And I feel for the Armory because now they've got this place that they're gonna use, they're gonna lose that parking. And those signs from the fire department where they came out there, it still says no parking in front of their, their, their dwelling. Why? Why hasn't anybody taken this down yet? Why do we still have parking signs in front of our, of roads saying permit only? Nobody's done nothing about any of it. For ten years, we've asked for sidewalks that are falling apart all down Prospect Avenue. Next year, next year, next year, there's a list, there's no list. Nobody's listening to us. And now you wanna add more to it and I don't agree with it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. I think it's Paul Franz.
Hello. Paul Franz, 30 Prospect Street. I've lived there since the 90s and I've seen a lot of things change and happen through there. And although I'd like to see, it'd be a great idea to have that lot sold and have it on the tax rules again because my taxes and everybody else's, my taxes have gone up about 15%. Water and sewer is going to up 10%. So that's true of everybody in Greenfield. But as far as the issue of that parking lot, it's, I wanted you guys to really look at it and think long and hard about it because once it's sold, it's gone. You won't be able to get it back, you know, so you won't, if the town does need space or to do something in the future, that won't be available. The parking issues have been raised about, you know, the Armory is being renovated. And since the parking garage has been built, a lot of different things have happened in that part, in that area. Mark Zaccio owns all of the surface parking on both sides of Olive Street, all the way back along the parking garage and all the way behind his building that's not public parking. No one can park there unless they pay him. The businesses, the Recorder's been sold. He owns that building now. So our customers have no place to park. That parking lot on Hope Street is no longer ours. We have no parking for our park street. The stone suit has, takes up a lot of parking during the day. They put placards in their windows and they get it by. I don't know why. The police department's taken the two spots up by the courthouse, so that's not available to people. And they can park in any spot they want to anyway. And they've taken several spots on Bank Row that aren't parking. I do appreciate, and maybe people don't know, that the DPW has put up signs at the end of Prospect Avenue prohibiting people to park right up to the streets so people have a better view so they can exit their streets more safely. I'm not sure how that's going to work or not either. But other things that have changed since the parking garage has gone in is that the YMCA is going to be able to expand. They don't have any extra parking there. Jury or parking, there's, you're asking people to come in and do their civil service, but you're asking them to walk down five flights of stairs and up a whole hill to get there. Human nature doesn't want to park far away from where they want to go. Hope's, I mean, Hope and Olive, not so much for dinner because it clears out, so their dinner people are pretty good. But during lunchtime, it's hard to park if there, if you want to go there. He's also invested in his building. He now has rented out suites above the, above him with no parking. Legal aid has moved into the other half of the Recorder Building and their clients have no place to park. So there's a lot of pressure parking on that street and it's full by 9:00 AM. And all the way up our street, if you look at the mental health building, 13 Prospect Street, who used to park up and down our street, and I thank the Parking Commission for giving us back our parking so I can at least park in front of my own house. But they double park their cars there and every day you can see that they're parked along the street and everything there. And they've double parked, so they, they're crammed in there. So they're, and people park from the Salvation Army, it's, they don't want to, anybody that goes Salvation Army seems to want to park right in front of the place. And it, people are parking by the barriers, blocking the sidewalk. I think some Hope and Olive customers do that also. But I'd really like to see, I mean, right now it's kind of blighted. It would really be nice if it was put back into tax rules. It would be great. But also if nothing else, it'd be, it, parking, if you opened it back up for parking, it would be utilized. And it's a heat sink right now. If anything that happens there, I'd like to see some trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pamela Goodwin?
Good evening, councillors. Pamela Goodwin, 54 High Street, apartment 307 over at the Wildon. I've been a member of Housing Greenfield ever since I moved back to this city. It was a town when I was born here. And so I feel very torn listening to everybody talk about all of this. I must admit. I am funded where I live and I am working with the unhoused who have no place to live. I'm on the ad hoc and I'm downtown quite a bit, usually walking with Maria or Officer Zoe. And I had a person who just was evicted next door to the Wildon. A landlord said, "Move out. I'm going to renovate the downstairs floor." And the wife is impaired and they're now homeless. I have another person that's living close to my neighborhood who is worried about losing her house because I don't think she can make her mortgage. I have a friend who's new to the city and she loves her daughter, but her daughter is living with her and her daughter has been looking for an apartment. Her daughter is employed over at GCC. We now have an onsite resident manager at the Wildon, first time in years and years. She would love to be able to buy a home here in Greenfield and move out of Springfield. She had been working for Shockett down in Hartford, Connecticut. The list goes on and on and on about the need for housing. And as Susan Orgaffit just talked about, you know, people are still being evicted. The rates are pretty high. The rents are high. I don't know what the answer is. I know of a person who's impaired and I would love to think that she could find an accessible dwelling. I think she is now homeless and some of us do know who she is. So I would love to think that we could find a, an area that would have a park for all neighborhood children, not just people living in a possible apartment, that we could somehow compromise and have a percentage of possibly some funded vouchers. But that I know we also need high-end, you know, affordable is a term people are not sure of. When I listened to the parking problem, I went to every one of those parking hearings and I was annoyed that there was a ton of parking all in that area. And I know what the plan was for the Main Street and I see a whole lot of parking lots. There could be something besides sitting there empty. I got lost trying to find the Sheriff's Department on the back end, winding my way around. We have a lot of one-way streets. You can't turn here, you can't turn here. We've had accidents with people trying to get in and out of places. I will say that in Framingham, there's way too many people and cars and they want people to use public transportation. I don't see Greenfield trying to do that, but maybe that's part of the answer. I will say I think councillor Garrett is all for biking and walking. We could actually shut down Main Street and have it be pedestrian. Maybe that's an answer too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next I have Louise Amiot.
Good evening. I'm Louise Amiot and I live at 56 Madison Circle and I'm here representing Housing Greenfield. After hearing the stories about parking on the Prospect area, I'm torn, as Pamela was, because I'm hoping that there's going to be more housing in town. And housing downtown would be lovely. Obviously, this lot is problematic for the neighbors and I don't know what the council will decide. I was here to recommend that you put this lot into extra, I forget what it's called now, but extra property that the city can sell. And then hopefully that would turn into housing. I don't envy you your jobs. It's a tough decision. Thank you.
Thank you. John Yakichik?
I have to forgive me. I'm not very good at public talking. So I'm speaking on my mother's behalf, 15 Prospect Street. My mother bought her home, 15 Prospect Street, 34 years ago, March of 1991. Seems like ever since the day she moved in, there's been some type of never-ending construction between the YMCA, the courthouse, the parking garage, the transit station, the temporary fire station, and latest has been nonstop work being done at the former Armory. The never-ending construction. My mom is 72 years old and would like to live some of her life in her home without overwhelming construction noises. That being said, I bring up the view. Constructing a building on the parking lot plot would block her view of the Western Valley Range. Traffic and parking is a nightmare on Prospect Street. Thursdays and Fridays, when Hope and Olive do events, people are parking all the way down Hope Street, all the way up Prospect Street, blocking the entrances that are blocked off to the parking lot. It's, parking is needed in Greenfield. It's very obvious. Alternative locations that I can think of for housing, Wilson's, the old bank on Bank Row, the old Car Hardware Building, the old Mix and Match Building on River Road, the vacant field one lot over from Mix and Match. There's two vacant lots on either side of Appleby's, Green River School. I know you guys were just talking about that earlier. Or the old Brown Motors Service Center in Greenfield. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Letson?
Carol Letson, 29 Allen Street, Precinct 3. Glad to be here, to see you all. Thank you for your service. This is many opinions shared with you and I'm only going to repeat what has already been said, so I'll keep it short. I do, for three years now, I have been working, speaking to the former mayor, the current mayor, about the need for more housing downtown. And so I really am in support of using the Hope Street lot for housing. And it can be done creatively. I have heard the neighbors' complaints about parking. I think some of those problems have been relieved just because of our new mayor, who has come in and helped relieve those problems in some facets. So I don't think I'll prolong my statement any longer, except to say I'm for using the Hope Street lot for housing. We need the housing for our employees in town, for the nurses, for the teachers, for people who are employed in town who need housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Adams?
Good evening. Pamela Adams, 21 Prospect Avenue. Thank you to those of you who responded to me and on my email. 2018, cruising down High Street and I got T-boned from a fellow who was flying up Maple. I had to get cut out of my car and to this day I still have some issues from that. So when I pull out of Prospect Street, onto Prospect Street from Prospect Avenue, there's been several times where I have almost been T-boned. It's not a great feeling. There are, we have a lot of elderly people who live on our street and it's really concerning for me, for my neighbors' care as much as mine, to not be hit. I've been to the parking meetings. I've been to meetings with our former mayor where we were promised that the Prospect Street would be, there would be markings for appropriate parking. And that's been a number of years now and that's never been addressed and it continues to be an issue. We have gone down to the cars ourselves, those of us who live on Prospect Avenue, have left notes on cars to say, "Please, stop parking on the corner because we can't see around you and we're going to get very hurt." So for me, I feel that there needs to be more parking. I feel that, like Paul said, it's very hot there on that lot. I think that maybe if we were to turn it into parking, I know that Joe Commerford has been talking about the covered parking lots with the solar. I think the solar panel would help to create more electricity for our town. I think by selling it to a private or company, that that's not going to necessarily benefit, except maybe there are taxes that they pay for the residents. But I do know that there's other spaces maybe where housing can, I understand housing is an issue. I agree. But what's happening with the, with the Wilson's building? And the gentleman before me had said, you know, there's multiple spaces. I thought that's the place that was, used to be the Howard Johnson. I thought that was going to be turned into some housing. There's been a lot, there's a lot of different areas that are empty around town that I feel that maybe could have some housing. And also there's parking for the Wilson's, behind Wilson's, if there was to be turned into parking for the residents that would live in that area. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Stacy Sexton?
Stacy Sexton, 74 High Street. I'm here to speak in favor of housing on Hope Street. I'm hearing what my neighbors are saying and I'm deeply sympathetic to their concerns about safety and concerns about wanting to park close to their house. And some folks even raise concerns about how the different estimates for parking lots or parking availability were constructed. And I feel like those are separate issues. When I think about the safety issue, I'm hearing that. But what I'm hearing is that that's about how you design the intersection more than it is about how many cars are available to park. And so I think that if you put that in as part of the RFP, that there needs to be maintained visibility so that that becomes a safer intersection and provisos for sidewalks and things like that, that that's a positive though that we could do and still use it as housing. I'm also hearing that there are a number of different properties available for housing and I say use all of them. If it's really true that we need 400 to 600 units, then do them all. I will share that for me, you know, I'm currently a renter. I would love to be a homeowner in Greenfield, but the pricing, I just, I can barely afford to rent and I'm on the verge of being priced out. I want to stay here. I want to continue to be of service. You know that I am a person who has been involved from the get and would like to continue to be. But if we don't get more housing to alleviate some of the price pressure and more specifically have housing that is, I don't know if we can do caps on what we charge for rent, but most of us can't afford $2,000 for a basic apartment. And so like, you know, we're on the verge of be, losing out on a whole generation of folks like me who just can't afford to be here, who could add a lot of vibrancy, who could be spending dollars downtown, who could be continuing the tradition of doing additional like public outreach or creating these cool events that some of our neighbors are doing. I just feel like if we want to see more of that, then we need to have people here to do those things. And we're not going to get that if we continue to say, "Well, we want housing, but not here." And there will always be a reason to say, "Not here." And we have to figure out ways to sort of meet the needs and also say yes to housing. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last public comment, I'm going to online, I have Nikki Garrett.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me? Oh, you can hear me. Great. Yes, hi. I'm Nikki Garrett. I live at 93 Hope Street. And I'm speaking in favor tonight of the council voting to deem the law at 53 Hope Street a surplus property so the city can move forward with the housing development on this parcel. As, as you know, and you've heard a lot of arguments tonight, and I'm sure you'll hear more arguments from residents against this parcel becoming housing. And some of the arguments that I've heard, some of the counter-arguments that I'd like to present are as follows. First, you may hear that there is enough housing in the development pipeline, that there is an additional, that we should, you know, wait until the housing that's in the pipeline has been developed and then we'll see, do we still need more? My, my counterargument there is, as Susan very eloquently pointed out, the numbers don't add up. We don't have enough housing in the development pipeline to meet the need that does exist. And those, the estimates there are, you know, ranging from conservative 400 units to the more, more... to the more, uh, more, uh, inclusive numbers, so anyway, we're, the numbers don't add up, and we need to build more housing and get that in the pipeline ASAP. These projects take a very long time. Um, as someone who has been involved in some housing development recently, um, one project that I know was initiated in, I think, 2015 or so, didn't come online, um, and, uh, open up to residents until about 2023 or 2022. So, we're talking years and years of development for, for any kind of housing project, so let's act quickly. Um, also, we need all different types of housing, so whatever is in the development, uh, pipeline right now may not be what comes up on Hope Street, so it's important to keep all those options open. Um, the next point that I wanted to note, oh, actually, before I move on, there's been a misnomer out in the public that this, this will be opening up the lot for public housing. Um, that's just factually not true, um, public housing can't be built in the state of Massachusetts at this time, so it might be, um, income restricted, but it won't be public housing as in owned by a housing authority and managed like that. Um, so, anyway, uh, the next argument, um, people might say that Hope Street's not a good location for the housing, because it's too dense or something. It's actually kind of the opposite is true, it's an ideal location for housing. It's, it's near, um, the train station, it's in the library, as people have said, it's a very, very good location. Um, and though there are parking struggles, um, I want to say that, my third argument here, uh, is that Hope, the Hope Street lot does not replace, um, does not provide irreplaceable parking for the city, um, or for businesses nearby. While the lot is convenient, it's far from irreplaceable. Um, the recent parking study, as some have cited, says that we have an abundance of parking, we, over an abundance of parking. And I think I just want to encourage, um, everyone who's thinking about this, to think creatively about how we can overcome the parking challenges that exist, because I think there are, there are creative solutions to avoiding just sticking in the status quo. Um, there is a way forward that can be creative, that addresses the community needs, but also opening up housing, um, opportunities. So, um, just overall, you know, the, the data from the city studies are clear. We need housing, way more housing. We need, we have enough parking, and we need less, less parking.
Thank you.
It's an ideal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always feel awkward when they're online, because they can't hear the, the timer. So, I just want to thank you all for coming out and speaking to us. Um, it's, it's always a fraught issue when it's in your own neighborhood, so, um, really appreciate everybody sharing your concerns, um, and your experience with this. We're going to take a break.
Madam President?
Yes?
Could I ask, ask a question? Could we, uh, after the break, maybe, uh, move the, the motion for the, uh, Hope Street up? So, so, everybody who talked tonight talked about Park Street, so.
I'm just going to cut us off, because otherwise, we're violating open meeting, and you and I can figure that out. Thank you. So, we're going to take a five-minute break, which will actually be 10 minutes, because that's how we roll here. Getting back to order, so all the side deals can move outside or come and sit back in. Thank you. Um, I think there might be a motion from Councilor Perry that I might know about.
Yes, I apologize for interrupting earlier. Uh, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the rules, so we can move item number eight up to now to discuss it. So, so many people were here on this specific issue.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can we do a, we don't need a roll call on that. Everybody who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? So moved. So, we, we will move up and go straight to item, now I've got to look through here. Is it item eight?
Item eight, down here.
Thank you. Authorizing the mayor to sell city-owned land located 53 Hope Street, and if I can have the motion from Councilor Healy.
Yeah, this is order number FY26-001, and we're going to take this into parts, so we're on A1. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the, the Greenfield City Council declares real estate at 53 Hope Street being shown on accessor map 52 lot 25 to be surplus property and transfer said property to the mayor for sale. I need a second.
I'll, I will second it, but I think we needed to actually do item seven to surplus it before we do selling it. It's item seven, so the motion needs to be seven.
I'm so sorry, yes.
Oh, yeah, for that. Rules and procedures.
She did that, but there's no embarrassment. Can I amend the motion to, uh, that we suspend the rules, uh, and discuss item number seven, then eight? And then eight, while we're at it.
Second.
Great, and I think since we're taking it out of order, we can do any crazy out-of-order, so we can go to eight and then back around, so you don't have to declare everything, but thank you. Um, all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No abstentions, no noes, all right. Back to Councilor Healy for number seven.
I'll read it again for the record. Order number FY26-001A1, that the Greenfield City Council declares real estate at 53 Hope Street being shown on assessors map 52 lot 25 to be surplus property and transfer said property to the mayor for sale.
Uh, Councilor Bullock, was that a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so we'll go, uh, let us know how it went in EDC, and then we'll.
In EDC, this was a unanimous positive decision. Um, we, we heard from the people that were there, and, um, yeah, so it was a three, three zero vote.
Councilors, any questions? And I just want to remark that we also have Amy here, um, who can also answer any questions, since she has a deep, in-depth knowledge of. That looked like Councilor Gullup.
Yeah, thank you for staying, actually, Amy. I do have some questions that I was hoping to ask the mayor, but then I saw she's no longer here, so I'm not sure if you're able to answer them, and, and it's totally fine if you're not, like, you want to. Yeah, that's totally fair. There are three things that I wanted to ask. Um, would you like to take them one at a time, or would you like?
Oh, you can hit me however you want, go for it.
Okay, so, and these really are questions for the, the mayor, so if you don't know, this is not a.
I will not hesitate to tell you if I don't know.
Okay, so, questions I have are, um, like, what is being done currently for parking and safety for the Prospect Street area neighbors? In the, it sounds like there's currently a problem, so what is happening to support them? Um, what will, what will be done to make sure that there is a parking plan in the development or in the RFP, to make sure that the parking needs of the neighbors and the safety needs of the neighbors are met? Um, and also, will there be, will there, what will they do, if anything, to prioritize developers, um, who would make it a hub for the neighborhood and include commercial or things like that? Thank you.
Sure, I think I can do all three. Um, with respect to number one, I'm going to give you a partial answer, and then I had made myself some notes during the, um, neighbor's comments to follow up. So, my department staff's parking and traffic, it was, um, Christian LaPlante, who was an amazing staffer who just left about a week ago to move to the chamber, so I have been now the staffer for parking and traffic for a week, so I'm working quickly to get up to speed. Um, I know that the issue about Prospect Street, in particular, the problem of traffic coming down and blocking the curb, um, had been talked about at parking and traffic, and we had talked to the DPW. I haven't been over there to see what has been done and what hasn't, so I made myself a note to follow up on that and those other comments. Um, we are happy to work with the DPW and with that neighborhood to do whatever is, um, legally possible and logistically possible with the DPW, to make sure that, um, to the best that we're able, we can help the neighborhood. Obviously, if people ignore the striping and the signs, there's only so much we can do, but, um. Thank you. New signs, I'm told have just been installed.
Prospect.
At the end of Prospect Ave, okay, great. Um, so I know this is a conversation that the DPW and my department and parking and traffic have had, and I will just, um, go back to the notes from parking and, and traffic and make sure that we've done the things that we said that we would. With respect to what will be done in the RFP, to make sure that parking and safety of neighbors are taken into account, I think I sent around to city council some bullet points, which were our, um, development goals or desires for the property, and included in there, first of all, I'll say that these are draft, so this is my first stab at what I think that the city would like. Um, one of the bullet points in there was. Um, so these are things that we would prioritize, they're goals that we hope, and then when we got to our, um, scoring criteria, so when bids come in and we review and evaluate them, um, the more of these boxes you check off, essentially gives you more points. So, one of the points that we have as of now.
Quick order.
Sorry?
Should we be talking about the RFP in the next one? Because this is not about the RFP.
What, yeah, I think let's.
But it's a specific order number.
No, no, it's the two different.
Could we take this out of order, because I think that for me, it's supposed to be as a package?
So they have to be voted in this order to be in compliance with the sale of town property. Sale of town property.
Can we talk about the RFP? That was the question? Because it answered with this surplus.
So if we could talk about it being surplus and being transferred for sale, rather than authorizing the mayor to sell it? Sorry, should I be using microphone?
Yeah.
So, the order that is on the table, you should be discussing whether you want to declare the real estate to be surplus property and transfer it to the mayor for sale. That's what, you should be talking about it now. These orders need to be taken in this order, to be in compliance with the policy for the sale of town on land. So, you have to decide whether you are going to declare it as surplus property and transfer it for the possible sale, and then sell it.
So, are we actually able to hear from Amy at all on these?
The second.
Questions? Even the second one, though, is just the sale of the property, it's not the sale of the property for any particular use? Okay. True, great. Sorry, Director Galen.
I'm going to go to Councilor Garrett, and then we can come back to Councilor Gullup, or.
I have a question specifically about the declaration of surplus. Um, is there anything that you're aware of in a declaration of surplus that would prevent, which I think it may have been you I talked to about this, the idea of condoizing the law and putting a park on a portion of it, that the city retains? Or is that not possible with the declaration of surplus? Or am I misremembering this entirely?
I believe that the declaration of surplus is simply declaring the land surplus, it doesn't get into anything beyond that, though I will look at Kathy, in case I'm saying that wrong.
I think you're just declaring it surplus.
Yeah.
The entire one.
Right.
Okay.
And along with that, transferring the property to the mayor for sale, but you're not authorizing the mayor to sell in this first order.
Okay.
This is declaring it surplus.
Right, so it doesn't take any options off the table, this surplus piece?
Not that, not that I know of.
Okay, perfect.
Councilor Bullock, and then back to Councilor Gullup.
Yeah, the one, so, okay, I have a few points, and I'm going to try to break them out now, from surplus to sale. Um, the first thing I want to ask is, so I've also been walking the neighborhood, um, mostly yesterday and today, um, and I talked to about 48 people, uh, and then I also, thanks to Dawn's, uh, leafleting, which didn't happen at my house, but, um.
Do you have your mind made up?
Yeah, no, I don't actually have my mind made up, but, um, but I, I was able to talk to about 14 people on the phone today about this, many who, similar to me, don't have their minds made up on this, um, and have a lot of questions about it, and what it means, and, um, what it could look like in a benefit to, uh, the neighborhood and meeting the need of, uh, increased housing as well. And so, one of the questions that I had when I was, when I was talking to a couple of residents, uh, is that if we surplus the entire 53 Hope Street lot, are we then, is there an ability to, like, split the, to divide the lot, or would that need to happen beforehand? Because there's the two tiers of the lot, right? There's the upper parking and the lower parking, and so if we were able to, uh, keep a portion of that, uh, to, for the, for the town, right, for, for public parking or for resident parking, to alleviate some of the congestion on that street? Because I do share, actually, a lot of the concerns in, in both directions onto Hope Street, both from Olive and from Prospect. Um, I've multiple times, especially during the hours when I, like, drive home from school pickup, have to slam my brakes on, because someone comes out of Olive or comes out of Prospect, and you can't see around the parked cars there. Um, so, the, the congestion is very real, I don't want to act like that, like, we can sit here and say, there's tons of parking, and there is, and people are parking in it, and it is a problem in that portion of the neighborhood. Personally, I don't necessarily think, um, for employees, uh, I got a lot of emails from, like, ServiceNet DMH employees, I feel pretty strongly that, like, that's a, uh, issue with your employer that needs to be regulated. When I worked for Community Action, we all had to walk from a lot to our job. Um, one of the other, yeah, so I have a, my first question is about dividing that lot, and if we did, were to divide that lot, does that make it too small of a piece? That I have to ask in the sale. Can we divide the lot?
I believe the motion before you is to surplus the entire piece. Um, having said that, I don't think just by virtue of you deciding to surplus the entire piece, that means that the city has to sell the entire piece. But I think you have to act on the motion that's in front of you.
I was going to propose something complicated, but I'm not going to do that. Um, I just, I prefer to see these holistically, but I, yeah, I'll ask my questions in the next, in the next question. Thanks.
And, and just have a question, kind of, because it, it's been brought up, whether or not there are other properties, um, in Greenfield that could be housing, and are any of those, um, city properties that we can determine anything on or not, that, at least the ones that have been proposed tonight?
Many of the lots that were listed tonight are not city-owned properties. Um, I would say that the city is pretty actively looking at city-owned properties that could potentially hold housing, and evaluating whether it makes sense, um, or not. So, I, absent a question about a specific parcel, that's probably the best I can do.
Okay, thanks. I know we're kind of constrained, we're all like, how do we say this so that it doesn't cause a problem? Anybody who hasn't spoken yet, who wants to speak? Okay, Councilor Bullock?
Okay, sorry, I have a list, so this clearly, this, you know, it's a big one for my, um, my residents, but I'm wondering, um, if there is an estimate on, first off, what the cost to resurface and repair that lot is, and then the ongoing cost to maintain it to the city? Um, and I know initially, like, we have very few free lots in town, so like, if that lot was to become a revenue generator again, uh, which actually. was to become a revenue generator again, which actually would make almost everyone I talked to very angry. People want it to be a parking lot and they want it to be a free parking lot. And so I, I'm just wondering if there's an estimate on the, like, cost to resurface it and then to maintain it ongoing?
I don't have that figure with me. I can tell you that we, I did have that conversation with the DPW at the time that the fire station was coming down, and the decision was made then that it was too big an expense to incur, in particular on a temporary basis. But I don't remember what the cost is if you all vote to not surplus it. I would presume that they would look into that as an option.
Yeah, that's like, one of the main concerns towards surplusing that I have. And when I talk to folks over the last 48 hours who either didn't know about this issue or knew about this issue and felt very mixed about it, the sentiment overwhelmingly was that my neighbors wanted housing, increased housing in Greenfield, and that area is a tricky area. And so how do we do it right if we're going to do it? And how do we make it work for that and alleviate some of the problems that we've had for multiple years now? But, you know, in terms of surplusing it, one of the issues that I think has been really present for me is overwhelmingly, as I have been collecting signatures over the last two weeks, the thing that people are talking to me about is taxes. And the way that we, we have a revenue problem, right? We just had our budget season, we couldn't fully fund things, we couldn't fully fund our schools. The only way for us to increase our tax revenue is through business or more housing. And if you look at, I know I've referenced the house, the development on Congress Street, which brings in, I think it's like $125,000 a year in taxes. And my understanding is that in just, like, looking at what could be possible on that lot, is that the rev, the tax revenue could be significant in that area. And so I just think there's a, there is a lot of things to weigh here, and I'm wondering if we can get some kind of understanding from the city, this is probably more a question for the mayor, of if we are to surplus this lot, like, what kind of guarantee can we get that the community will be involved in the RFP process and in creation of the RFP? And that there would be a potential for us to segment that lot so that we could maintain a certain amount of parking in the upper lot? Sorry, Amy, I don't expect you to, like, answer that, any...
Can I offer maybe two comments, three, the first one of which is, yes, that's a question for the mayor. However, on the community participation piece, my department, together with the neighborhood group in that precinct, did hold a couple of community meetings about this lot in advance, way back, probably last year at this point, and has committed to holding another community meeting, should the property be surplus, specifically to talk about the RFP with the neighborhood group. We also heard during the EDC meeting, and I think I've gotten at least one email, a request for neighborhood participation in the RFP process in some way. I don't know yet what that would look like, but my department is very open to that. I feel like I had another thing, but I think the rest of your comments are for the mayor.
Other questions?
Not that Amy, but I was going to make a general comment, I don't know, I guess now is better than never.
I just wanted to thank everybody who came tonight and spoke.
I want to thank everybody who sent in the emails, the emails are very important. I received 61 emails, 31 was to keep it and 30 was to sell it. And then tonight, I think the score was seven to keep it, no, six to keep it and seven to sell it. So you can see, you know, what's going on here. I have to disclose that I've been working at 13 Prospect Street since 2007, so I've seen it all. You know, I was there before the new courthouse, I was there before the parking garage, I was there for the whole fire department, and now I'm there for what's going on now. And I can just tell you from what I've experienced, what goes on there. And Ferris, the ServiceNet, we saw the ServiceNet emails, they explained, it's not as if ServiceNet comes in and works eight hours and leaves. ServiceNet, most of the program is outreach, they're coming and going, they're going to other programs, they have five GLEs in Greenfield, they're going to those programs, they're going to their, you know, they explain what they do, they come and go. So yes, some of them park in the garage, but they have to walk up the hill, and they do that three, four, five times a day. I've had to go out in the parking lot on several occasions to intervene because people are parking to go to court, parking on that top tier, which is state-owned, which, there's 20 spots for about 45 people who work in that building. So people have to park somewhere else. And then when the public starts to come up there, confrontations happen. I've told the workers in the building, do not confront anybody, just let them park there and let it go. You know, Hope and Olive customers have come up into the lot asking where we park. We have to tell them the garage, you know? Older, older people, I have to walk up the hill? Yes, you have to walk up the hill. I have to be very careful, I drive a big Ford, whatever it is, Escape or Edge, I think it is, and I had to be very careful driving in and out. This is not about me, but I'm just talking about what it is for, like, for people who use the Y, who go to court, who come to 13 Prospect Street, who go to Hope and Olive, who go to Salvation Army. These are the people. And you've heard the residents speak about their concerns, you know, and their legitimate concerns, so we have to take all this stuff into consideration when we're talking about this stuff. You know, so I just, I hope that, you know, we think about that. I'm going to vote no tonight, on behalf of all the people, my coworkers, the residents who spoke tonight, the neighbors. I'm voting no, because it's fascinating to me, because we're talking about the Hope Street lot, and how many times have we hear, we hope to get housing there, we hope that this is going to happen, we hope. Well, I'm not going to vote on a hope and a maybe and hopefully, when so many other people already have their needs and they've told us what their needs are for that neighborhood. It's about the entire neighborhood, not just the Hope Street lot. So there's my two cents.
I have one last question for you, Amy. If, if we surplus this property and don't get any good, as, as Councilor Perry had said, for not just to be hope, what happens at that point if there aren't any good development proposals?
I'm looking at Kathy to see if I can answer this. Surplusing the property and issuing an RFP does not commit you to anything. It's an ask to see what is out there for developer ideas. We could get them all back and look at all of them and decide none of them meet the needs or address the concerns of the neighborhood sufficiently, and we could say no. And that could be the end of it, or we could reissue an RFP that looks different or asks for different priorities, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Garrett and then Councilor Bullock?
I'm going to keep this brief, but I am going to be voting yes to surplus this lot. Councilor Perry's comments on the members of the community, I, it resonates with me, it truly does. And the thing that really struck me is we're talking about building housing for the future, and it doesn't exist yet, the people that don't live there yet are not yet our neighbors. But when and if that gets built, they will be, and they'll enrich our community, and they will be people, maybe it'll be doctors, maybe it'll be nurses, maybe it'll be teachers, maybe they'll work in the shops downtown. But this spot, this Hope Street lot, is right by the train station, it's, you know, I'm not going to just repeat what a million other people have said, but when we are building anything, we're building on hope. That's the foundation to literally the work of city government. And we have a housing crisis right now, and it's not going to be solved tomorrow, it's not going to be solved by building a couple of units on the Hope Street lot. It wouldn't, even if, you know, that list, that, there was a couple of people listed locations, let's build all of them, those 600 units, that would stabilize the cost of housing in this town. It wouldn't lower it. So when we're talking about 600 units, to my eyes, we're aiming too low. We need to be thinking about building more than 600 units if we actually want to have some impact on affordability. And that's a tremendous challenge. So if we take the opportunity in our control, and there's precious little we have control over as a city government, and we don't take advantage of it, I think we're missing an opportunity. So again, all respect to my neighbors who don't want to see this happen. We've, you know, as Councilor Perry has mentioned, we've received pretty even responses from the community, and I think we do need to build on hope. And, you know, I think we have pretty good prospects, to use the pun.
The dad joke's already started. Counselor Williams?
I'd like to call the question.
All right, let's do this. We're going to do a roll call?
Give me a second.
You have to vote on the call.
Oh, right, sorry. All...yeah, roll call.
Roll call on the vote, on the question?
Just to clarify, this is a vote on the roll call to call the question, it is not a vote on the order on the table. Councilor Goleb?
No.
Councilor Gordon?
No.
Councilor Mastra Tataro?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
No.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Healy?
Yes.
Councilor Brown? Councilor Garrett? Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The question is called by seven majority.
All right, so we're going to vote on the question on the table?
Which is to declare real estate of 53 Hope Street to be surplus property and transfer property to the mayor for sale.
And this will be a roll call?
Councilor Goleb?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Councilor Mastra Tataro?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
No.
Councilor Healy?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
By majority, the motion passes.
Okay, the motion that we already read, or rewriting.
Order number FY26-001A2. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council authorizes the mayor to sell 53 Hope Street, assessors map 52, lot 25 pursuant to the city council policy for the sale of city-owned land, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the same. Majority vote required, and that one was also, oh, give me a second.
Who second, was that Councilor Goleb?
Sure.
Thank you.
This was also a 3-0 unanimous decision, EDC.
Any other commentary to go with the EDC?
I can add as much commentary as you want, but I'm trying to be efficient. But basically, we talked to Amy and the community, and the big concern was in this was how we would format the RFP, and it sounds like Amy has done her due diligence in taking notes and trying to address those concerns, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, discussion, Councilor Goleb.
Yeah, if we can go back to it, do you have them written down, my questions?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we talked about the first one, the other two that I have are what will be done in the RFP to make sure there's considerations for the parking concerns and the safety of the neighbors. And then the second one was prioritizing that Hope Street lot as a neighborhood hub. And so the way that those things would be addressed is through priorities and grading criteria identified in the RFP. We've only made one initial draft of the RFP because I wanted to have something to talk about in front of you to make this tangible, but I am listening to the concerns and trying to work them in as best I can. So in the RFP, as currently drafted, with respect to parking, we have prioritized development that demonstrates a viable redevelopment plan with minimal on-street parking demands. After the comments at the EDC, I suggested that we could tighten the language of that to request that a actual plan or a language or a narrative around what their plan is for parking be included with their proposal. I think the safety piece I'd have to think about, I think that's a little trickier to include in an RFP, but again, when, if and when we receive bids, that is one item that can be considered as part of evaluating each of the bids. And bids that do a better job addressing those concerns and addressing parking will be given more points than bids that ignore that, if that's responsive.
It is, it is responsive. I, I have a follow-up, and I'm not sure if it's to you or it's to the mayor, but I, I guess I'm wondering, is there a verbal commitment to just really taking into account the parking needs and the safety needs of the residents there in this plan? Like, is that something that you could, you know, and it's not in writing, but just say, yeah, we, we care deeply about this and we're going to prioritize this? And maybe you can answer that question, but I, like, I would love, I would love, I think the neighbor, we heard, we have heard so many concerns recently this week about the parking, that it would be, it might help us switch some of those concerns to just hear a commitment to prioritizing them.
I live here as well, and I'm listening to all of this, and I hear all of the concerns, and yes, Councilor Goleb, I'm happy to commit to, and some of these things were new, but the safety priorities, absolutely. We want something that fits with that neighborhood as well, that is making the people, that is making people in the neighborhood happy. And it sounds like the, you know, parking is definitely an issue, and there were some safety concerns that actually were new to me to hear tonight that I was taking notes on and thinking, what can we do about that? And some things that I actually didn't know about, so I was very glad for all of the people that spoke up. Did I answer your question?
I, I believe that I just heard you say that, yes, you are going to commit to taking the parking and safety needs into account. Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
There was one other part of your question from before, if you are done on the parking piece, if you wanted, just to prioritize the neighborhood hub. And I would just say the same response that I gave for parking and safety, that the way that we can do that is through the language in the RFP. We have included priorities currently worded that we say proposed uses that complement the neighboring area. We can certainly change that language or add language to talk about something like a neighborhood hub or talk about the character of this lot and the concerns of the community. I don't know exactly what that wording would look like, because I've only thought about it tonight, but I'm happy to work on that.
Councilor Healy?
Hi.
I, you know, being a civil engineer and dealing with traffic control and other devices, I think there's some solutions out there for safety. You could either do a three-way stop sign, or you could make Prospect a one-way heading up towards Highland, which will allow you to park on both sides of the street and have a single stream of traffic going up Prospect ad towards Highland. You could either go over to Crescent Street to get to Main Street, or you could go down Armory Street to get back down to Hope Street, but that would alleviate a lot of traffic issues there.
Yeah, this is where I sort of have gone to over the last few days to week of thinking about this, is like how to alleviate the problem. One, I think, request that I have is that the RFP is very clear that it does not add a parking load to that area, that like all resident parking is maintained within, within that lot, or, you know, whatever development comes of that lot. You know, the other issue, which is, this is like a full cir, like, you know, the snake-eating-itself issue, is that when I think of those options that Derek gave, I thought about making Prospect a one-way, right? Which I think people would have a lot of feelings about, for sure. I know if you tried to make my Hope Street a one-way, I would be like, you're going to ruin my life. And so, like, I drive up and down Hope Street, you know, I drop kids off twice a day, like, I don't make me do any more loops around town. And so, but the other issue that we have is, and then if, so if you're going up and then you're coming down Armory Street, like, Armory Street is like tore up, like, and the other issue is that, like, we don't even have sidewalks on both sides of Hope Street. And this, which is why I initially ran four years ago, was to try to get that cut-through that is now just finished, finally, but it took, like, doing a survey and, like, an insane amount of work to get the funds that we needed to redo that little bit, that dangerous, like, overpass right under the archway. That was why I ran, and to get sidewalks on both sides of the street. We did get one side of the street sidewalks redone, but I can't even get, like, on Chestnut Hill, we have elderly folks, those sidewalks are terrible. And so, so we need this, we need basic infrastructure in this part of town that hasn't been maintained and hasn't been able to be maintained, and we need the revenue to do that. And so, like, if, like, there's this chicken/egg piece for me of, we can't even maintain a parking lot appropriately, or invest the money to maintain it. We all just went through budget hearings. So how do we, how do I say no to putting something on the tax rolls that would increase the revenue for the city and potentially make it so that that area of town is able to get more of its infrastructure needs met? I do just want to say for, like, response to the public tonight, that I did talk to three business owners on Hope Street who were in support of this. One of them did express, like, yeah, people complain about parking at our business, and it's annoying, and I know that Greenfield needs housing. The other side of it for me is, and I feel like I've said this every meeting where we were talking about zoning, is that, like, change is really hard. There's a, there's a development that's slated right next door to me. Like, literally, they will be my next-door neighbor, a new development. Do I have feelings about it? Absolutely. I have lived in that place for almost 16 years. I bought the lot next to me to have a bigger yard, I have dogs. Will it change the way I enjoy that area of my yard? Yes. And if it means that these two units are filled with two families, that maybe I'm going to have dinner with, maybe we're going to sit in my garden together, maybe we're going to hate each other and they're going to complain about my dogs, like, I don't know. But I have to, I have to say yes, right? I have to say yes to it. And so, and like, the last thing I want to address is that a lot of the emails that I got about this, and some people did write back to me again after you initially wrote to me, so I just want to say thank you for taking your time to write, like, two or three emails to me over the last few days. But a lot of the emails I got had some misinformation about the public housing, and someone addressed that earlier, and that, it might have been Nikki online, but, but this is not, this is not public housing. But also, if it was, like, you're showing a lot of cards when you're saying, say no to public housing. And full transparency, I moved to Greenfield and moved into public housing here on a voucher. And so, here I am, your public housing prodigy, and, and I would be for that on Hope Street, too. So I have a lot of, all of this is to say, I have a lot of, I have a lot of concerns, and I want to thank my neighbors for a lot of ideas. I feel like a lot of ideas were generated in public comment and in talking over the last couple of days. And my hope is that we can see a real engagement process where we don't just have one community meeting, when that community meeting happened a year ago, like, I had to work, I couldn't even go as the, you know, city councillor for the area. So I hope we can see multiple engagement processes, and I hope that we can really have some hard, like, hard stops on addressing some of the issues that have been brought up, so that it's very clear, like, all parking must be maintained in the unit. And the last thing I will just say is that my understanding of Armory, the Armory building, is that that's going to be a mixed-use building. And in the information that I gathered over the last few weeks is that there's a conversation happening for those potential tenants to park in another business owner's lot, which, so I just was, had a lot of questions from the public about, and we're going to have this increase from the Armory Street tenants, but actually, there's already something in the works to address that overflow of parking as well. So I am going to vote for this, and I am going to hope that there is a real engagement process that feels authentic.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, and then we'll go to Counselor Perry.
Just two things. First of all, I would say that my department recognizes that this is an incredibly special and important lot, and we're committed to not just mailing it in on community engagement. Second thing, on the infrastructure piece, while this is certainly not, it solves everything, it's just a tiny thing that maybe could make you marginally feel a tiny bit better, is, as we're seeing with Wilson's, oftentimes, when you are putting in housing development, there are state grant funds to do infrastructure to support that housing. So for the Wilson's development, that was a way that we got funding to improve the water and sewer lines on those side streets. My hope is, and we did that with a private-public partnership between the private developer and the city. My hope would be that we could look for similar things so that we're not just depositing a development into the neighborhood, but we're trying to access state funds through that development to improve and better all of the neighborhood.
That would be amazing, because if you live down the end of Hope Street where there's new private development happening, there's a new foundation that's about to go in for a brand-new building, and a building that was just renovated down there, I'm assuming they're multi-bedroom units that are going in, that there's going to be children living in those houses. If you have a child that lives down there, they have to cross the street six times before they get to the top of Hope Street, to cross Main Street, to walk to Federal Street School. So that is a safety issue. Like, we should have sidewalks down both sides.
Counselor Perry?
I just want to remind people that one of the reasons why keeping the lot would be good was to keep the cars off the side streets. When we had the permit system a while back, the neighbors, a gentleman tonight complained about it, the neighbors didn't want the cars up and down the streets in front of their houses. And so, if we go, now we're just going to create another problem. But I do appreciate the lifeline you threw when you said that, well, if we don't get any good, you know, our, if our response is, well, we won't sell it. You know, I won't be around when that happens, but I hope people remember that conversation, you know?
Yeah, there is no obligation to expect, to accept a bid if you hate all the bids.
Right, so that, that gives some hope to the people.
No.
Well, I'm speaking for Dodd, but for some people, it might help. I'm still going to vote no, because I still think the lot is important for that neighborhood, and I hear the arguments, but I still, I'm going to vote no.
Counselor Garrett?
We keep talking about off-street parking, and I just want to re, or on-street parking, and trying to prevent it from being gobbled up. And I just want to read from section 200-40, sorry, I lost it. It's, this is the regulation for multifamily zoning, and it just says, "The parking shall be off-street." So in the regulation for multifamily zoning, it requires that the parking is off-street, so I hope that assuages anyone who's concerned about that to at least some degree. So in the development of it, I don't think that's going to be a major concern. At least, that's my hope.
Counselor Gordon?
I'm a little confused about whether we're supposed to be directly asking questions to Amy and the mayor right now, or discussing? Is it both?
I think we're multitasking.
Great, just, just checking. I want to respect their time as well. Because I actually don't have any questions, but I really appreciate you being here, both of you, and answering all of these questions, and having clearly put a lot of thought into this. And I really appreciate all of the, the public comments on all sides of this issue. It's, it's clear that there are really strong feelings about this, and I understand why. We've heard about a number of problems tonight that clearly need to be addressed, the safety problems, not, people not wanting to park in the garage, which I understand is already being worked on, you know, in terms of improving the garage, a need for more accessible parking for people with mobility issues, which is super real, all sorts of things. And, you know, it's, it's striking to me that if we return this to being a parking lot, that's kind of a workaround for a lot of those things, but it doesn't actually address most of those things directly, and, and so those problems are still there. Would it make it a little easier in the short term for some of them? Probably yes, but it doesn't actually solve the problems. And so, what's really clear to me, and I appreciate that you're both taking notes on this, is that we really need to address those issues head-on, particularly the safety issue and the sidewalks. I also have to cross Silver Street six times when I'm walking my dog to get from one end to the other, so I appreciate how, that that's, it's not safe. And certainly, kids, older folks, a lot of people can't, just can't do it. I am going to vote yes on this. I'm particularly swayed by Director Kellane pointing out that, you know, there's a long way to go, as, as you were saying, before any real decisions are made on this. I do think that, you know, it's tempting always to compare big questions, big issues, big decisions, here and anywhere. It happens, not just in Greenfield, but, you know, this, this, just because something happened with, you know, one project, doesn't mean that the same kind of thing is going to happen with this one. So I hope folks that will keep that in mind and, and have some faith that they really are being heard, that we really do want and need to see a lot of public engagement and involvement in the RFP process and the decision-making process. So I join my fellow councillors in encouraging a really robust process around that, and appreciate everything that's been done up to this point.
I just have one question for either the mayor or Director Kellane. When you get proposals, how much ability do we have to shape the outcome and where it lands? You know, we're, we're hearing about all the concerns, and, you know, in an ideal world, we're going to have five proposals, and they're all going to be great, and then we have to choose. What have you seen as, as working in economic development, that ability to get the best outcome?
I think the first, most important part is the language in the RFP, to shape the proposals that you get, and to weed out, weed out things that you don't want to see in a proposal before they even make it to you. If you do wind up with a proposal that you're interested in accepting, there is nothing preventing you from going back to them and asking for different things, saying you, you don't, you, you know, you want to see something different in this section of their proposal, or you like their proposal, but you have questions about this aspect of it, or until, you know, closing documents are signed, you can negotiate with the developer.
Thank you. Something that's been spinning in my brain a little bit, hearing folks talk about, you know, the, the lots that are nearby, too, so the Zacchios, you know, there's, I'm trying to think, over, over by, by the train station. How much, how much can we create flexibility and maybe work with those landowners where it's, you know, parking for office workers during day, but making it available? You know, I think of, like, who goes to the, to People's Pint and parks, you know, Greenfield Savings Bank after hours? You know, where, where might we find some creativity in solving some of that neighborhood parking problems, especially for people who are using the movie theater and other things after, after dark? And you might not have the answer, but I'm just thinking out loud to my fellow councillors as well.
I think some of that already, already happens. I think with the apartment buildings at Hope and Olive, that some of those parking spaces, because there's a good-sized lot there, my understanding is that FERCAG uses some of those during the day. I think they must pay for that. Okay. I think there are some, there are arrangements that are made with, like, businesses or other places, but that was one that, when I was listening to all of the issues, I was thinking about that lot.
Yeah, just thinking, you know, as, as city officials, you guys might be able to help encourage some things to happen, so that we can hear people. So, did I see another hand up? I'm going to go to Counselor Goleb, and then I'll come back to Counselor Perry.
I don't have a question. Thank you for answering them. I just want to share where my thinking is on this. As I've been thinking about voting on this, I've honestly been thinking about, what would I do if I was in Counselor Bullock's seat? And I'm being glad that, that this isn't in my precinct. It's really hearing, you know, a lot from the neighbors, and, because it's easy to ask, you know, what would folks out in Precinct 1 say? Want a thriving downtown, want to add to the tax base, want more housing? That's what people have said, but, you know, as, as councillors, our job is to represent our, our neighborhoods, and then also, or our precincts, the precinct councillors, that's part of our job, and then also, our job is to vote in what we think is in the good of the whole. And I think that the people, you know, who, the tax, wanting to add to the tax base, wanting to add to housing, wanting a thriving downtown with people who are, are going to go to all of the places downtown, I think, as someone said, like, this is a, this is a, this is one of the few opportunities, the few parcels of land that we have, that we have the opportunity to make into housing, and it is a collective resource that we need to steward in the good of the whole. And so that's what, like, thinking about, you know, I would vote for this, too, if this was my precinct, because I think we have a responsibility to vote in the good of the whole. And then, I looked at the, all the emails that we got from people in that area, and I heard from people tonight from that area. Hope and Olive was, was named several times, and we, while we've, at 5:43, we received an email from Maggie Zakara, who owns Hope and Olive, saying that she fully supports and is hoping that we vote in favor of housing. So it is also clear, I feel kind of relieved imagining myself in, in representing Precinct 5. We've, we've heard equally, also, if we tally up in the precinct, and in that, in the, on Hope Street and on Prospect Street. So I could talk more, but that, those, that's where I, where I have landed, and I'm excited and hopeful for this project.
Counselor Perry?
I just wanted to mention to the mayor that several of the emails, and a gentleman during the break commented to me that they were annoyed that this lot has been sitting there for a year, and they felt like, even what, no matter what happens to it in the future, why is it just sitting there now? I know, there's expense on the earth stuff, but people are just, like, every time they drive by, they look at the weeds, and they look at people walking through it, and they're thinking, why can't we park there?
If there's no other comments, let's go for a vote. So this will be a roll call. If there's no other comments, let's go for a vote. So, this will be a roll call.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
No.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes by 10.
Okay, we're gonna go back to our regular order, which we're gonna start with number one, which is the mayor's appointments, and that is Counselor Goleb. And I just want to thank everybody for being here. It will make this, whatever it ends up being, better because of all of the comments on both sides, so thank you. And I just want to comment, as we get to this, or be listed in the order, because there are already staff, and so they aren't being appointed as it is listed on this order. So, we're not excluding somebody or doing something crazy. They're already there, and the mayor knows it. So, thank you. Counselor Goleb?
I'm not just skipping their names. I am skipping their names, but I'm doing it purposely. Okay, so, number, order number fiscal year 26002. The city council moved that it be ordered, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 210 affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Agricultural Commission Lou Marie Judge, term to expire December 31, 2028. Commission on Disability Access Jen Rankin, term to expire December 31, 2028. Historical Comi, Historical Commission Alternate Karen Pleasant, term to expire December 31, 2027. Opioid Use and Prevention Commission Abby Godfrey, Sarah Ehern, all terms to expire December 31, 2028. Sarah Rashad, term to expire December 31, 2027. Majority vote required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Outcome from A&amp;O?
Could, could you, could you fill in about the outcomes of all of these, actually? Because I was not present at that meeting.
It was a positive unanimous recommendation, and we were all grateful for the folks who wanted to volunteer their time.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? I'm just gonna mention, I've known Jen Rankin since they were four, and they're now 19, and I'm very excited that somebody who is entering college is interested in, in being on one of the commissions, so, and appreciate everybody for stepping up, as we always do. All right, all in favor of, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? No abstentions, no opposition. Motion carries. All right, next we're going to all of the, so, every, on, years that end with a five, we update all of our ordinances, and so you all are gonna be seeing a lot of these coming up, and so this is part of it. We've gotten amendments and all of that, so I'm gonna send it over to Counselor Goleb for all of these.
Okay, although some of these that are coming up are new ordinances, but thank you for previewing what's to come. And we'll just do the same process, I'll read it out loud, and Counselor Garrett can say the recommendation.
Thank you.
So, order number fiscal year 26003, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by adding Chapter 120, Crossroads Cultural District Committee Ordinance as attached heretofore, and further amends the table and index of contents of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Second. And the recommendation was positive unanimous. The context on this one, this came from the Economic Development Department, and the Crossroads Culture District is relatively new. It had been operating under master general law. Christian LePlante put together this ordinance to basically adopt master general law on the local level, so it's truly official, and that was kind of the gist of it.
Thank you. So, codifying what's already happening, essentially. And Tim Fisk was with us last month and talked about some of the work that they're doing, if anybody can remember to last month.
The distinction, so the next, yeah, the Crossroads Cultural District includes economic development, you know, flower buckets, things like that downtown. The next one is similar, but doesn't have the economic development piece, just art.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions, opposition? Okay, motion carries.
Order number fiscal year 26004, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by adding Chapter 122, Local Cultural Council Ordinance as attached heretofore, and further amends the table and index of contents of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Is there a second?
Second. All right, so this one was also positive unanimous. This one was actually even more enthusiastically put forward than the last one, in that it also codifies master general law into our local ordinance, but the way it was currently structured, we had cultural council members who didn't have terms that were expiring, so they were kind of trapped, and they'd been serving the city faithfully for years. So, this allows them basically an easy exit ramp, and a smaller committee, I believe, as well, to make it easier to get volunteers.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, downtown parking.
Order number fiscal year 26005, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by adding Chapter 320, Downtown Parking Benefit District Ordinance as attached heretofore, and further amends the table and index of the contents of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Second. This is also positive unanimous. I don't have any comments on it beyond just thanking Counselor Healy and EDC for taking the first look at it. I don't know if it'd be appropriate to offer.
Yeah, Counselor Healy?
So, this has been a long road, but it's finally at the table. I'd like to thank Amy, Hannah, and the mayor for their commitment to this. This was something in EDC that I really wanted to see move forward, because, as everybody knows, I'm an advocate for downtown and downtown businesses, and I really feel like, by master general law, we're allowed to do this, and this is gonna help us improve our downtown sector in a positive manner. So, thank you, everybody, for your time you spent on it, and I look forward to the vote.
Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, I just want to add to that quickly. I echo that thanks, and thank you as well, Counselor Healy, for bringing this up. And since parking is, is clearly a sensitive issue, I do want to assure folks that, you know, you can go back and watch the EDC meeting where we talked about this in a fair amount of depth, and there's really no downside to this. Like, it's not, it's just adding money to the, to the city that we can use to make downtown more attractive and a nicer place to be. It doesn't cost taxpayers anything extra, like, it's, it's actually just like a win-win. And we don't get those very often, so really appreciate you bringing this forward.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'm not seeing any opposed, so motion carries. Onto residency. Sorry, I... I did read them all.
Order number fiscal year 26006, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield as written in the attached heretofore, Chapter 68, City Council Parking Permits, and further amends the index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Second. And this is another positive unanimous one. The substance of this, there's really, it's relatively minor changes. The way the city issued parking permits to city counselors is different now. No longer has a sticker on it. You guys have probably received these. It's a hang tag with a year on it, so that's codified in the language here. And then the second piece that changed is there's no longer provision about taking away the city council's parking space, presumably because there is no city council parking space. So, if we ever get one, we're not gonna be able to have it taken from us, so, one that day comes, all 13 of us will be circling for parking. In any case, I'm done. So, that's, that's really the long and the short of it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, so, not gonna take my parking space away. Okay, now we will go to residency, if that's okay.
It's great. All right. Order number fiscal year 26007, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield as written in the attached heretofore, Chapter 164, Planning Board, Section 2, Residency Requirements, Service on Other Boards, and further amends the index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Second. All right, another positive unanimous, and they all are, just as a surprise. This one's even simpler than the last one. We don't have a parking space. There is no Greenfield Montague Transportation Authority, so you cannot serve on that board and also serve on the planning board, but now it's gone, because the transportation authority is gone.
Seems pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that carries. Okay. This one is the tricky one, so we're gonna go to the council, nope, sorry, I keep skipping ahead, Conservation Commission, this one's straightforward.
Yep, okay. Order number fiscal year 26007, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield as written in the attached heretofore, Chapter 515, Conservation Commission, Section 5, Clerk, Subsection A, and further amends the index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Second. Another positive unanimous, again, a relatively simple change. The word "permit manager" is being changed to "conservation agent," regarding who will be the clerk of the Conservation Commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Okay, so now we're on to the council on aging, and there is an amendment.
So, I'll read the main motion.
Thank you.
Order number fiscal year 26011, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield by striking in its entirety and replacing as written in the attached heretofore, Chapter 520, Council on Aging, and further amends the index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Second. So, this was also positive unanimous, with the caveat that we were gonna amend some of the language to make it actually match up to the charter. So, on page, what is it? 104 in the packet I'm looking at? That's, that's the... Is it 105? I had downloaded it as a PDF, so the, yeah, this is 104 on mine. I may have looked at the wrong version, but regardless, in, oh, I need to make a motion to amend, right? So, I'm just gonna jump ahead and just do that.
I'm sorry, didn't hear the mumbling.
Uh, sorry. I'm gonna make, I was just thinking to myself, I'm gonna make a motion to amend with the changes, and then I'll just kind of outline where they are. They're...
Perfect.
All right, I'd like to move to amend this ordinance, and Article 5, the word "ordinance" aft, in the second, or in the third sentence after COA, be changed to "rules" or "regulations." And then, I'm gonna read Article 9, it will be replaced entirely. Counselor Goleb was kind enough to take our written version of it and pass it to folks, because they want to follow along. And so, Article 9 would read, instead of amendments, amendments or regulations, the articles of this ordinance or any section thereof may be requested to be amended, revised, or repealed by the city council by a two-thirds vote of the COA. Written notice of proposed change will be presented to each member at least 10 calendar days prior to the vote. Upon an affirmative vote, proposed changes will be forwarded to the city council for consideration. Changes take effect immediately upon approval of the council. Any other regulations or rules the COA wishes to implement in accordance with mission statement, and that do not conflict the charter, city ordinances, or law, may be adopted by the same method save the need for forwarding to and prove about the council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor will?
Do you mind if I kind of explain it?
Yes, please.
So, in the original version this council on aging handed us, they used the word "ordinance", which has a legal definition of something, a law passed by the city council. And so, the council on aging can't pass ordinances, so that's why we changed it to "rules" and "regulations." So, the only change is from the original draft of it, is just to make sure we're not violating the charter, basically. And so, that's what all this gobbledygook that I just read out basically does. It makes it so, if they want to change, they can ask us by a vote of their, and if it's something they can set as a rule, say for the senior center, they can vote themselves, as long as it doesn't get in the way of other ordinances, the charter, or state law, powers that aren't actually delegated to councils on aging.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, so now we're going to Native American burial grounds, and without...
Still need to pass the full motion, point of order, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I skipped over. All right, so now to vote on the main motion as amended, and not just the amendment. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Without objection, I would like this item of the Native American burial ground to be considered at the council August meeting. The attachment should be in strike form, and that's the reasoning for, so that we have a clean thing to look at. Do I have, and I don't, nobody, if everyone's okay with it, then we, we don't need to vote on it, we'll just move on. You see, nodding heads, no objections, great. So, now we will go to the rescind order.
So, this is order number FY 26-017, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council rescind, oh, Mike, order number FY 26-017, the city council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council rescind the following order voted during their regular meeting held on March 19, 2025, which was order number FY 25-053. On March 19, 2025, the Greenfield City Council, on motion by Counselor Healy, seconded by Counselor Master Tataro, it was by majority and one abstention, vote that it be ordered upon recommendation of the mayor, mayor disorder, to approve the mayor to enter into the attached pilot agreement with the BWC Millbrook LLC related to the solar farm development located at 12... solar farm development located at 1245 Berniston Road. Second.
Do we have a second?
And, and this is basically just some general housekeeping here. There was some Mass General Law language that had to get added to this pilot agreement, which was added, so, yeah, that's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And then this is the follow-up, order number FY 26-018, the city council upon recommendation of mayor disorder, in order to approve mayor disorder, to enter into a pilot agreement with BWC Millbrook LLC related to solar farm development located at 1245 Berniston Road, moved that it be ordered that the city council approves mayor disorder to enter into a pilot agreement with BWC Millbrook LLC related to the solar farm development located at 1245 Berniston Road. Into the attached pilot agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, so this is basically the same agreement with some Mass General Law referenced in it. It's still the same monetary value that it was the last time we approved it, so it should be pretty straightforward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so we've already done some of these, so we're going to keep moving, so past 12 and 13 and we're at 14.
Yep. This is fiscal year 26-013, the city council moved that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield accept general laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22F, which lowers the time required to establish residency in the Commonwealth from two years to one year for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025.
Is there a second?
And this received a unanimous positive recommendation of the four of us that were present. I don't know if all of Clause 22 deals with veterans, but the ones that we're talking about do, and this is just, just a preview, all of these are to make these requirements a little bit easier anyway to help people stay in their homes. It's for tax exemptions and they said it's fairly complex to get the rules that come with applying with all these, but these are just, and particularly this one is just lowering it one year to be able to qualify for some of these exemptions.
Counselor Brown, is this with the HEROES Act?
I believe so. The HEROES Act, I think, addresses several different chapters of law and this is specific to exemptions that we could change and lower requirements or add, just, we could make improvements if the city so chooses. And the city, I believe in talking with the assessors, decided that they thought these were worthwhile.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Order number fiscal year 26-014, the city council moves that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield accept general laws, 59, Section 5, Clause 22G. Real estate that is the residential domicile of a person but is owned by a trustee, conservator, or other fiduciary for the person's benefit will be eligible for any exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025. Majority vote required.
Is there a second?
And this was also unanimous positive and just affects people who have a home held in trust or, sorry, it's late, my brain is going, but that they would be able to take advantage of some exemptions.
Any comments or questions? All in favors?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries?
I'm going to order after recusing myself on this next vote.
We have an extension?
No, he recused, he recused himself.
But this next vote.
Okay.
This is fiscal year 26-015, the city council moves that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield accept general laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22J, which provides an additional exemption of 25% of the amount of the tax exemption granted to veterans on their domiciles under Clause 22, Clause 22A, Clause 22B, Clause 22C, Clause 22E, and Clause 22F for any exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025. Majority vote required.
Second.
And again, this was unanimous positive. Counselor Master Totaro recused himself from this vote, but again, all the same reasons. There is an exemption currently, but there had been no cost of living or any kind of increase to that exemption, so this will be an increase for that, that potential exemption. And I can't remember if it was all of these together or some of these, because we asked about the, the amount of money this would cost the city and it's somewhere 100 or over 100 people take advantage of these and it wasn't a tremendous amount of money, but again, it's just more help to keep people in their homes.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last one. Order number fiscal year 26-016, the city council moves that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield reduce the qualifying age to receive a 41(c) elderly exemption from 67 to 65 years of age to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025. Majority vote required. And again, this was unanimous positive.
Do we know how many, how many taxpayers this covers?
He said it wasn't that many.
Oh, was that the same as the previous one? When you said it was about a...
They may have said that there weren't, was this the one they said there was no one?
No.
Was that a different one?
A lot of people don't even use it, so we didn't anticipate a lot of, you know...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Garrett?
Just on the subject of people not utilizing these exemptions, you know, I wonder if we could talk to our Department of Veterans Services, I'm not sure if that's the exact title of that department, about disseminating this information to folks, you know, especially, you know, folks in the community who may be vulnerable to losing their homes. Because, you know, we can have these changes, but if nobody's using them, it's not really doing any good, so. Any ways we can communicate this as a city would be ideal, obviously.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? Nope. Okay, we've ended the voting portion of the evening. So now we're to presentation of petitions and similar papers, there were none, reports of committees, nothing, unfinished business, nothing to talk about, but there's always unfinished business. Old business, nothing, and new business. Counselor Healy?
Yeah, so, in the last EDC meeting, we kind of discussed bringing back this motion on protecting the storefronts down on Main Street in the Central Commercial District. So this language I put forth in that meeting and I'm trying to get it, I think I believe the next EDC meeting can be a joint meeting with the planning board for this.
It all depends on publication and communication.
Okay, well, I've requested that. So this basically amends Section 200-14, Central Commercial District, amend this Section 200-14, Central Commercial District CC of the zoning ordinance to require that some multifamily developments within the Central Commercial District be mixed residential business uses, so as it reads as follows, uses permitted. 18, multifamily dwelling in accordance with 200-40, subsection B, 1, and 4 through 9, all multifamily developments within the following areas of the Central Commercial District shall be mixed residential business use. Main Street from Fort Square East to Franklin Street, Federal Street to Main Street, or Federal Street from Main Street to Pleasant Street and all of Bank Row. So previously, you know, this kind of went down a windy path, but this is kind of another, we'll call it, another negotiation on my end to say, hey, we've kind of shrunk this down along Main Street a little more, it really entitles all the storefronts that we currently have on Main Street, Bank Row, and Federal Street that are of importance to, you know, the local businesses and the GBA and, you know, all, all the small shops downtown. So I'm not willing to let this one die and I will bring this back as many different ways as I have to to get it through, but this was my, hopefully my last attempt and hopefully everybody in the future will agree with this and that's where it stands right now.
Thank you. Any motions for reconsideration? Nope. All right, so I will take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 9:45.